I'm not gonna be able to make the Borrego walk through.
Uh, AG's letter. Yep.
Time of the day is long.
You got it? Yep. Okay. I'll get into that.
My granddaughter.
All right, I gotta call the meeting to order at six forty, apologize for being a little late this evening. And welcome, everybody, all those folks out there in TV land. Had a big fan of ours last night, gonna give a shout out to Mrs. Pierceall, thanks for showing, says she watches us every week.
All right.
Grand old lady from the Hubbardson Center School, it's good to see her again.
Mrs. Pierceall?
Mrs. Pierceall, yeah.
Pierceall.
She's the school secretary.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. You better be careful, grand old lady, man.
Grand lady.
That's right. Nevertheless.
It's cattle, right?
Cattle, yes. And a reminder that this meeting is being broadcast live and digitally recorded. First order of business is going to be a letter that we received from Tony DeLuzio, Project Executive Cardinal Construction, Inc., 10 East Street, Worcester. And it says to the board, please accept this email as a request to formally withdraw the application for site plan approval without prejudice for the senior center project proposed at Twenty Went Gardner Road. The project will be resubmitted in a late summer, early fall period after redesign. Please let me know if there is anything else required on behalf of the project. I am bugging out of town for a few days, will be back next week, I'll pick up the submitted documents from your office at that time, thank you, Tony DeLuzio. So this is in reference to the site plan special permit application that was submitted last month. Is there a motion to accept his request?
Motion to accept his request.
To withdraw the application for the site plan without prejudice. Second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Motion carries, thank you. As a point of information, last night on the floor of the Hubbardson Town Meeting, the proposed temporary moratorium on the non-medical marijuana establishments was accepted by the voters. And what we'll be doing next is getting ready for a bylaw on the non-medical marijuana use. We'll be working on that coming year. Uh, let's see. We have a request for a site plan submission from Brian Bordle, or is that an R or an S? I think it's a R, Brian Bordle, for Thirty-Sixth Main Street. He on our record as Brian and Denise Bordle of Sixty-Nine Berry Road, Worcester. The property's in a commercial district, they're looking for a site plan approval for a professional office. This is simply the submission, the application. And what we are going to do tonight is vote to accept the application and sign the application. Then we will schedule the hearing for next month or as soon as we can. The good news is that there is a site plan on record for this particular property, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. However, it's still required.
What property is that?
That's the old Asna Comet.
Building, yeah.
Credit Union, okay.
I have a question.
Yeah. Hello, yes, and who are you, please?
Brian Bordle.
Oh, hello, Brian. Good, how are you?
When you read that, you said that it was Sixty-Nine Berry Road, Worcester.
Yep.
You said Worcester.
Did I?
Well, that's the, isn't that your address?
That's his home address. I don't have anything except Sixty-Nine Berry Road.
Well, I thought you said Worcester after that.
I'm sorry if I did, but I'll.
Oh, you said Worcester County Registry of Deeds, perhaps, I don't know.
I don't know.
The next set of words.
But that's okay, I don't blame you for wanting to be in Hubbardson instead of Worcester.
Any questions, I'm here.
No problem. Well, unfortunately, tonight, all we can do is accept the application, which is the method of submitting it. And we sign the application and then we begin the process for the site plan. And as I said, luckily, it's some, I don't know, did you use the one that was on file?
I've been using the same one that's been on file for the last twenty years.
With the roof.
No idea where.
Well, that's what we're gonna do. Do I have a motion to accept the application for the site plan approval for Brian Bordle?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Submit to six, seven. We need at least two, but we voted on it, so we might as well sign it. So what we'll do, Mr. Bordle, is we'll post a meeting notice and if you've read the application, you know you have to come up with a list of abutters and letters. And we'll get it ready for hopefully next month.
I had a question on that. I got the list of abutters, but I don't have envelopes or the labels.
Oh, I didn't say you need one.
I know, it's a dollar extra at the assessor's office if you ask for the labels. And then we can put on envelopes and send them out for the, so if you want to go back to them, then.
Okay.
Um, then we can get the notices sent out for the public hearing when the date's determined. Thank you. He said, is that all?
Uh, yes, thank you very much. Yep, no problem.
Thank you. Any other call? Is that the only signatory copy?
Or that, yeah. Is it more than?
Oh, we all got a copy.
Oh, we all have a copy, so this is, this is the one that'll go in file. Okay, no problem.
I don't need one, that's fine, we signed it.
Okay.
Duty's done.
Yeah, I don't have it either.
So Janet, can I add that letter?
Oh, that's Scott's copy, I was looking for yours. He found your copy, if you want one.
I have one letter I'm gonna read into the record from the Office of the Attorney General, Commonwealth of Massachusetts. In reference to the open meeting law complaint. Dear Chair Ritchie, this office received a complaint from Christine Bolduc dated April sixth, twenty seventeen alleging that the Hubbardson Planning Board, the Board, violated the open meeting law, general law, chapter thirty A, subsection eighteen to twenty-five. The complaint was originally filed on March thirteenth, twenty seventeen, and the Board responded by letter dated April third, twenty seventeen. In her complaint, Ms. Bolduc alleges that the Board deliberated outside of a noticed meeting. Following our review, we find that the Board did not violate the open meeting law. In reaching a determination, we reviewed the original complaint, the Board's response, and the request for further review filed with our office. We also reviewed a video recording of the meeting of the Hubbardson Board of Selectmen, the Selectmen, held on February twenty-seventh, twenty seventeen. Finally, we spoke with the Board Chair by telephone on May second, twenty seventeen. We find the facts as follows. The Board consists of five members, thus three members constitute a quorum. The Selectmen scheduled a meeting to take place on February twenty-seventh, twenty seventeen. Because a quorum of the Board anticipated attending this Selectmen meeting and convening a Board meeting thereafter, the Board posted a notice listing the sole topic as, quote, attend Board of Selectmen's meeting, end quote. The Selectmen had held the February twenty-seventh, twenty seventeen, meeting as planned. Three Board members, Chair Vincent Ritchie and members Thomas Bracco and Thomas Robinson, attended. During this meeting, the Selectmen discussed the complaint that had been filed against the Board member. Following the Selectmen discussion, the Board Chair anticipated that the three Board members would remain in the meeting room and discuss next steps following the Selectmen discussion. Mr. Robinson left the meeting room while Chair Ritchie and Mr. Bracco remained inside for several minutes. During this period, Chair Ritchie and Mr. Bracco made casual conversation. When Mr. Robinson re-entered the meeting room, the three Board members discussed whether to convene a Board meeting or to delay discussion to a later date. While the majority of the conversation was recorded, there is an approximately one-minute gap in the audio. Ultimately, the Board decided to delay discussion of the complaint referenced during the Selectmen meeting. As the three Board members were departing, Chair Ritchie stated he was going to a restaurant called the Hubbardson Pizza Palace. Discussion, who says we don't have a restaurant in town? Discussion. The open meeting law requires that all meetings of public bodies be properly noticed and open to the members of the public, general law, chapter thirty A, subsections twenty A through B. The open meeting law defines a meeting as a deliberation by a public body with respect to any matter within the body's jurisdiction, general law, chapter thirty A, subsection eighteen. Deliberation is in turn defined as an oral or written communication through any medium, including electronic mail between or among a quorum of a public body on any business within this jurisdiction. It, however, the definition of deliberation omits discussions of scheduling or procedural information. For the purposes of the open meeting law, a quorum is generally a simple majority of the members of the public body. Here, the complaint alleges that the Board deliberated outside of a noticed meeting. As an initial matter, we note that the Board posted notice of a meeting to take place on February twenty-seventh, twenty seventeen. However, that notice stated that the Board would attend the Selectmen meeting, not that the Board would convene its own meeting afterwards. In any event, we need not reach the issue of whether the discussion following the Selectmen meeting was proper, as it involved only two of the Board members. Because Mr. Robinson was outside the meeting room for much of the conversation, there was less than a quorum present. See general law, chapter thirty A, subsection eighteen. When Mr. Robinson returned to the room, the conversation concerned procedural matters such as whether to convene a discussion on another day. Accordingly, this did not constitute deliberation. While Chair Ritchie stated he was going to a restaurant following the meeting, he did not solicit the other Board members to join him. Chair Ritchie stated to our office that no other Board members accompanied him to the restaurant. Absent evidence to the contrary, we credit the public body's version of the facts, see open meeting law, twenty thirteen dash seventy-three. Accordingly, we find that the Board did not deliberate outside of a noticed meeting. Conclusion, for the reasons stated above, we find that the Board did not violate the open meeting law. We now consider the complaint addressed by this determination to be resolved. This determination does not address any of the complaints that may be pending with our office or the Board. Please feel free to contact the division if you have any questions. Kevin W. Manginaro, Assistant Attorney General, Division of Open Government.
What was that file number, two thousand seventeen twenty-three? Says it up on the front page. Up on the top.
O M L two zero one seven dash eight one. Okay. One of the issues that was brought to my attention this week by a resident and a butter to the Seaboard Solar site on Williamsville Road was a question as to whether or not Seaboard Solar is in compliance, excuse me, with all of the conditions of their permit. We therefore would like to, I would like to ask the Board to commission Bill Murray to do a complete review of all the solar projects in town to make sure everybody is in compliance with all the conditions of their special permits and report back to the Board.
Are we supposed to do this every year anyways?
We may, but we might as well do it today.
No, I mean, aren't we supposed to do a review of the solar systems every year, is that in the special?
We could look it up, I don't know, right off the top of my head.
No.
Yep.
Make a motion, we commission Bill to do just what you just said.
Okay, there's a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Oh, because I have one and a butter.
Well, you're a butter to one, we're gonna initial all, so you're gonna abstain, very good. Oh, I jumped ahead, alrighty. Now, we're six minutes ahead of time, I have a, I have a hearing at seven.
Correspondence.
What is this?
Correspondence.
Oh, more correspondence, okay, I'll get ahead of myself, hold on a minute.
I think there's a couple of things in there too.
All right, this is from Tony Capola, I'm sorry, Bill Murray, who says he spoke with Tony Capola of Hubbardson Conservation Commission. And Tony and Bill and maybe even Rick Green will be walking to Borrego Solar Site, potential Borrego Solar Site off Williamsville Road this coming Friday. Meet at the site driveway at two P M. I do not know if members of the planning board wanted to attend. I asked Janet to post that, we have a posted meeting, two P M, at one forty-seven Williamsville Road. Public's welcome if you, Bill Mallory made it, there he is. Didn't see you come in, thank you, so.
I can make it.
Can you make it? You can make it?
I think I can make it.
All right.
I can.
All right, great, so if anybody else is late.
One o'clock or two o'clock?
Two o'clock, one forty-seven Williamsville Road. Any changes to that?
No, sir, there are some changes. We're gonna be meeting interior to the site, not at the street, but I guess I'll meet everybody at the street as well, that's what.
You're gonna drive down to their house?
I'll let Dean answer that, how's that?
Yeah, there's a, like a utility building, a barn, you know, off to the side. Sorry, Dean Smith for the record.
Sorry, Dean, I have that map, you want me to make a copy for them, the one that you sent?
Yes, if they see that map, you just drive back the driveway to, there's a parking area near that utility building, and then they'll walk back to the map. Yep. I'm gonna try to be present myself, but there will certainly be someone from Borrego present for it.
Okay, so we read this to the last one.
What's the objective of the meeting?
It's a site plan, it's a site, site review.
Just gonna walk, walk here.
The, um.
This is gonna be one of the biggest soul plans in the city.
The Conservation Commission wanted to walk the site before they.
Yep, that's why.
Yeah, before they make a decision on our order.
Long as they're, tick protection.
They're bad this year.
Why?
Particularly bad.
The engineer's in traffic, so he shouldn't be here any minute. I just don't wanna pull everybody out.
We've got four minutes, we've got four minutes before we can start.
Uh, did Larry have a chance to look at it?
Um.
He was gonna look at the.
He did.
Did he?
And this is attached to the, I sent that to you, did you?
He did, I didn't have a chance to, I didn't have a chance to read it.
So do you wanna wait and do that another time?
Yeah, we'll do that another time, but I, as soon as I got, from this from you, I called Larry and told him that we have to see this. So we have, and this is not the one we need to attach, Janet, we need to attach the one that has.
So that's your copy, I have this one here.
Okay.
Keep that in mind.
Now, let's, let's wait for that, I wanna make sure I got a chance to read it. There are extra chairs in the senior center, if anybody would like to get a chair, by all means, just grab them out of there and make yourself home.
Sorry.
So we're gonna hold off on starting the public hearing till the engineer on the project gets here, doesn't make any sense to begin with, I don't know. Talk among yourselves, we'll be here in a few minutes.
That's why the microphone is on.
Yeah.
I started bidding more, but.
Yeah.
And the Tucson magazine.
Oh, thank you.
Oh, I moved now, it isn't even clean, it's kind of wet.
Hey, Dean? Yeah, so last time, or two times ago, you were here with, uh.
Zach.
Zach.
Zach Parkes.
He promised us information on the community solar project. We have not got anything.
Okay, I'll follow up with him, um, he was planning to be here tonight, but he got tied up in another.
All right.
Uh, we're, we're still working on things with places, so we'll, we'll need to get conditions here next week anyway before we can close things out. So I'll, I'll talk with him about that tomorrow and, um, make sure that he gets you information in between now and at that time.
Yeah, a lot of folks have been asking about it, it'd be good to have it.
Yeah, I think this project won't actually get constructed until two thousand eighteen, we'll be in a new incentive program, so.
That's the Williamsville Road project, the Williams.
Yeah, Williamsville Road.
I was speaking, I'm sorry, I was speaking of Gardner Road.
Oh, you mean the Gardner Road. Yes, it is a community energy project, so.
And will Williamsville Road also?
Uh, Williamsville Road, I don't think it's been determined yet, like you mentioned last time.
Okay.
Uh, one of the optakers is being considered as affordable housing project, but I don't think that's often ironed out, we have to wait until we're in the project.
Okay, well, it'd be good to have that information on the Gardner Road, so.
On the, on the.
People are interested, or anticipate, but.
Good, thank you.
Does the same fly attend all meetings?
Does the same.
Fly.
I don't know, I'll check it out.
He's here every meeting, too, even in the winter.
I didn't know he was.
He signed in?
He's elected.
Why'd he sign in?
He lands, I will be.
Is that a big fly?
He's got a camera on both of these two chairs.
Is there a meeting going on next door?
No.
Are you gonna be kinda over here?
Yes, I would.
Yes. Is that, are you in there?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, is it?
Yeah.
Sorry about that, you know I'm a little bit.
I've nodded that up real good.
So we have here.
With the electric, I'm gonna have a hard time getting through. Don't trip over the edge.
That's the worst boiling job I've ever seen in my life.
How's that?
The responses in red or just the second edition entries? The responses in red?
Yeah, he has that up here.
Just a second.
The view comments to six.
I can't do that.
Well, we'll get it at five o'clock.
Yeah.
I mean, I saw Bill's, I saw Bill's response to the roadway.
This is Bill's. It's right in here.
Part of his response.
Page four.
Yes, page four is what I saw. Where do you want me to go, I guess? Are we reopened, Mr. Chairman?
Nope, not yet, we're waiting for you, I'm sorry, are you all set to go?
Ready to go, thank you.
Uh, we're gonna begin the public hearing, I need a motion to recess the planning board meeting in order to do so. A meeting, I mean, a motion, seconded, all in favor? All right, we're gonna continue the public hearing for the earth removal permit for the D J Palm application, D J Palm Nominee Trust, as it is. And we're gonna continue with, I believe, the further information by Mark. And then we'll speak with Mr. Murray, our consultant, about his reactions that he's had so far and, uh, open it up, questions to the Board and then questions to the public. Where's yours, Mark?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, the, again, my name is Mark Bowdre with Meridian Associates, I'm a professional engineer here in Massachusetts. And we've, um, I'm representing the applicant, D J Palm Nominee Trust, on an earth removal, uh, application for a property on our Pitcherville Road. And to date, we have had two public hearings with, with the Board as well as the site walk. So, uh, you know, I believe we are, you know, slowly working through the, um, uh, you know, the, the comments and whatnot that have been raised today. Comments, questions from the Board as well as the, uh, the, you know, the, the town folk. And also, dear Places Associates, as you know, has provided a, a peer review letter that we responded to on, uh, May third. that we responded to on, uh, May third, uh, for the, for the last hearing. At that time, we also provided a revised set of plans that added supplemental information. And, um, my understanding is that, um, Mr. Murray from Places has provided a follow-up report to the board that we received a copy of as well this afternoon. And, um, my understanding is that this is a, uh, a draft, uh, you know, review that, uh, that Bill provided kindly to be able to at least have, uh, you know, something, um, that we could, you know, uh, talk to this evening. And that has, um, uh, a- a- as you, as you'll see with his red comments in that letter, many of the items that were on the original comment letter have now been addressed, which is good, so, uh, we're making some progress. So, um, back on the, uh, at the last hearing on May, May third, we had talked about, uh, a- a- at that time, I had asked the board for a, uh, a straw poll, if you will, regarding, uh, the request by the applicant for a, uh, a waiver of the requirement to do a traffic study for the, for the application. And while the board did not want to, uh, you know, provide that, that vote, I think it was, uh, pretty clear from the feedback we were getting from the board and, and some of the, the, you know, other people in attendance that there was a probably, probably a strong chance that that waiver was gonna be denied. So, what we did was, uh, the, the applicant then agreed to have a, uh, a truck traffic assessment done um, to, uh, be able to, um, address the, you know, some of the concerns and questions that, that people had relative to truck traffic on Pitcherville Road that would be generated by the, uh, by the project. And, um, that, uh, a, that, that assessment has been provided to the board. Um, it's my understanding that copies have been distributed to the board members. I've got additional copies here with me tonight that I could hand out if somebody, you know, i- if the board does not have a copy. So, um, hopefully you've all had an opportunity to review that. Uh, the, uh, the study was done by, uh, you know, Ron Mueller and, uh, and Associates. And Ron is with us this evening to, uh, address any comments that you might have or questions that you might have relative to the study. And, um, so, um, the, we, uh, we formally withdraw the request for the waiver at this time on the presumption that the study has been done. So, additionally, coming out of the, uh, coming out of the, um, uh, the, the, the peer review, various, uh, the, the two public hearings, the sidewalk, et cetera, there was some, uh, legal questions that, um, had been raised that came up on, uh, I, I, I think at the, at the two hearings, um, such as if the public had the right to access through the property to gain access to the, you know, uh, to the, to the, you know, uh, far, state forest land, things like that. So, um, Attorney Michael Wiggins, uh, representing the applicant as well, um, has provided a, uh, a response to the comments as their questions, as I understood them, you know, taking notes, you know, hopefully fairly diligent notes through the process so far. And, uh, Mr. Wiggins has provided a letter to the board, which also had been provided in advance to the board. And, um, Mr. Chairman, is that, has, I don't know if that's been circulated to the board members as well, but, um, I do have additional, uh, copies of that as well. Yeah, I've actually got.
And, Mr. Wiggins, if, if you would like to make some comments following Mr. Bodry, you're welcome.
Sure.
When Mr. Bodry finishes, I'm willing.
Yeah.
Let me just ask you, does the affidavit of Stephen Bick get attached yet? Does that letter have enclosed Wiggins?
What?
It was about the title, and I, I have extra copies of my letter, so.
There is not.
What I did was copy the, the letters we received and said, no, the affidavit was not attached.
Okay, well, these copies have the, if anybody's interested, it's just, it's the affidavit of the titled attorney regarding what, you know, that was his report.
This is back in two thousand twelve?
Yeah, Stephen Bick, actually, way back before that, it was an affidavit that was involved in litigation, uh, that was.
Give me that, also the copies and.
Basically, he was reporting on the title, so that's, that's what I was citing, what, you know, I, you know, when I, when I said what, what we were able to discover. So, we didn't, we have not ourselves done a full title search.
Oh, I see.
Oh, I got you. Alright.
I see Mr. Bodry.
No, it's, it's attached to the one that.
No, did you get?
Here, you can have mine. Never mind that one. Can I have that one?
So, this was dated in two thousand one?
Yeah, that was.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Alright, so, um, obviously Attorney Wiggins is with us tonight to answer any questions that, um, that y'all might have relative to, um, either, you know, the items on, on, on this letter or anything else that the board might be interested in. Also, the, uh, at the last hearing on May third, a letter was, uh, received from the McCollies, where it was written, read into the record. The question on that, uh, uh, that provided by the McCollies was a concern that, uh, apparently they had some experience with a landfill closure on Templeton Road, possibly, that, uh, that I recall that apparently runoff, uh, from the reclaimed landfill had caused some, uh, some concerns that they had. And there was a, um, we had asked RMI to, uh, who you may recall is providing the, proposed to be providing the, uh, reclamation material uh, for the, uh, for the pit. And, um, we asked RMI to respond to the le- that letter that was received from the McCollies. And we just received this today, so I did not have an opportunity to provide it to the, uh, in, in advance copy to the board. But if you could pass those around.
One page.
Actually, if I could keep one for myself, just in case, thank you. One thing important to note, the, the last paragraph, that RMI was not involved in that landfill closure job. So, the material that was used to cap that landfill is not the, the material that's gonna be used on, proposed to be used on, on this project.
Well, that's okay, because it's, it's great you addressed that concern, and we needed that historical reference as well as the updated stuff, so that's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome. And we have, uh, we have not, um, prepared a response to the, um, to the, to the current Places comments that came through, the response to the response that came through today. We, we haven't had an opportunity to do that, and, uh, it was just received, uh, you know, later in the afternoon. But, um, my understanding too is that it's a draft. So, we, uh, you know, we wanted to, um, you know, discuss the items tonight, hopefully. And whatever is remaining out of that report that warrants a response, we can, uh, we'd be happy to do that.
Okay.
So, um, anyway, I'm not, you know, at, at this point, Mr. Chairman, if you, you know, we're, we'll, we'll follow your lead and, you know, wherever, uh, you know, whatever you'd like to talk about at this point and, and address. Um, the, uh, obviously, I'm not gonna go through and present the whole project again, it's, it's, uh, you know, this being the third public hearing. I, I know there's probably some new, new people in attendance here, but again, uh, uh, this, this is the third hearing, so we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Well, what I'll do then, if you don't mind, because this is, I'd like to get this out of the way, I'm gonna read this letter from Heart and Soil Ag Products into the record for everybody who's here, so we don't have to distribute copies. And then we can go right into Mr. Wiggins, if you have any comments, that'd be fine. Alright? This is in reference to a letter that we received from Mr. and Mrs. McCollie concerning the material used to reclaim different types of landfills and gravel pits. And their concern was based on the, I'm not sure I know the year, but the landfill closure at twenty-five Templeton Road, which was many, many years ago. And RMI is the company who is proposing to bring in the cover material for the reclamation. And they addressed that concern that the McCollies had. And it says, this letter is in reference to the letter addressed to the planning board dated December fourteen, twenty sixteen, from Mrs. Jane McCollie, and an additional note from her husband, Mr. Kenneth McCollie, about the restoration project on Pitcherville Road for the Marinelli approved gravel pit. On December seven, twenty sixteen, Resource Management Inc. submitted a comprehensive packet of information to the Hubbardson Planning Board about the Marinelli approved property site restoration project. Additional information was submitted in a letter on May two, twenty seventeen, to answer questions about the material and the management of the material. RMI has managed short paper fiber and Class A bio solids from the proposed generators for twenty years. All the materials have been tested and approved by Mass Department of Environmental Services, and in the previously submitted documents, these approvals have been included. Use of manufactured topsoil allows for restoration of a vegetated cover without having to strip topsoil from an agricultural field. The McCollies have raised concerns over the Hubbardson landfill closure at twenty-five Templeton Road. RMI is unfamiliar with this project, but believe this landfill is owned and managed by the town. We suggest any concerns about the landfill be directed to the town's Department of Public Works. If you have any questions, please feel to call or email me. Felicia Morissette, Project Manager, Compliance and GIS for RMI. The Heart and Soil of Ag Products. We do have that report, if anybody likes to review it. And the, uh, the issue is, we wanna make sure that there are no contaminants in any soil that's gonna be used for reclamation that would be involved in a, uh, is it Class Two wellhead protection area, am I saying that right, Class Two?
Well, it's a Zone Two area.
Zone Two, Zone Two reclamation area, so we'll be reviewing that as well. Alright, now, Mr. Wiggins, I would be happy to turn the floor over to you, if you'd like to make comments on the submission you made.
Sure, uh, you know, I was asking questions, uh, and Mark, and so I tried to ask them as best I could, and that's why this is addressed to him and not the board. As far as public access to the forest, we haven't done a title search, but as far as we know, there are no easements over the land to the back. That said, certainly my clients have no objection and certainly want fire and police to have access and would do their utmost to mark that road, uh, which is, is, is there. So, I don't mean by those comments that I made that the public, in terms of fire access, would not have, have, you know, free access. But as far as, sort of for recreational use, if everyone wants to wander through, it, it appears from the history, from Stephen Bick's affidavit, that these were rights of access for people who actually work in the land, so to speak, and you, you're working a bit to the back at the far side of the forest. And that's what the moment had to do there.
Well, excuse me, I've contacted the DCR and sent a letter off with, with maps, asking them to clarify, and they are looking up their deed.
Okay.
Their deed was done in nineteen, uh, nineteen oh six. And, uh, they're gonna clarify whether the public has, general public has access, that's the exact question I ask. Does the general public have the access to recreational, uh, use to that property?
So, there was a deed to the Commonwealth back then?
Yeah.
Okay, so I.
Nineteen oh eight, eleven, eleven twenty-seven nineteen oh eight.
Because if, if we, yeah, if we could get access to that, then it'd be great.
Well, they're, the state is gonna give us what their REIT has, but typically, by other accounts, states, typically, states wanting properties have general access for the general, access, needed access for the general cover, that's why they have them there.
So, one of the other questions was, um, the, the, uh, the, uh, the soil blending issue on site, and the question was, is, is this a business that's been carried on? I was trying to interpret that as to whether that was asking, is there kind of a manufacturing operation that's gonna go on on the property? Uh, and the answer would be no, that like any gravel, sand and gravel business, uh, and this one too in the past, when a customer wanted a different blend of materials, whether it be for, you know, concrete sand for building, for, for road application, sometimes there wasn't the right product on the property, so the, to accommodate the customer, they would come in and blend the material and then remove it. So, it's not the introduction of foreign materials, any hazardous materials onto the property, it's just mixing of different sand, gravel, things like that in the course of the operation of understanding gravel business. Um, and the, the, the possible buyer here who's with us today would be doing the same thing. Probably, and he could elaborate with you, Steve Boucher is here, um, he, he could elaborate with you as well. Mostly, it's using the materials that are there, and luckily, the materials that are there are good for a lot of products. They've got a fair amount of small stones that makes great concrete sand, and there's a lot of good sand there. So, mostly, for at least the applications that were there before, that's what they were doing. But occasionally, DJ Palm and, and his contractors may be doing some mixing. So, that's, that, that would be the business, so it's.
Well, wait a minute, there's a, there's part of our zoning bylaw prevents people bringing importing material into the town. So, it's not like you can just all of a sudden stop importing material into the town, of, of any type.
Well. I'd, I'd like to start and have.
Well, no, but this is part of his, this is part of his.
Well, I understand that, but let's finish the presentation.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Wiggins.
I, I just wanted to add to what Attorney Wiggins said, is that historically, the applicant had brought in, uh, organic compost, crustone products, things like that, to do blending operations on, on the property, and then would, would haul out, excuse me, those, uh, tho- those, uh, manufactured materials, like, manufacture's a wrong word, those blended materials. So, they're specialty type materials to meet certain spec. And, um, are, are you referring, by the way, to the, uh, importation bylaw, general bylaw?
No.
You're not, okay. Cause that, that, that talks about a completely different type of material, very specific, MCP type material.
So, and then there was another question, why, why there was no reclamation done since two thousand twelve? And, and that's, let me just back up a little bit about the history of Hannah and Louise and my clients and DJ Palm. They thought, really, that they'd be in rocking chairs, collecting money, as today, not here. The reason being that they had sold the property in two thousand twelve to somebody that they thought was gonna work the pit in a responsible way. And in fact, that operator did come in and get a permit, I think we have that in the history. And so, the, the last thing they thought is that they'd be having to deal with us today. And unfortunately, that operator did not do, uh, the right job, uh, let's, let's face it. And, but, but I want it to be clear, and I think everybody should understand, that they, at that point, had sold the property, uh, they had taken a mortgage back, but as mortgages, they were not in a position to be able to control what was going on in the property. Um, and, uh, eventually, that operator, as we know, failed, he left, he did not do what he had said he would do, uh, not do what he had promised the town to do. And since that time, since early two thousand fifteen, when that was the last time that any product really was taken out, after that gentleman left, there were a couple of small contractors who put some material with, with arrangements with my clients. But, but they've been working their tails off to try to find somebody who is responsible, who understands the products, and has a vision for the property, and, and they have that person now, in Mr. Boucher. So, yes, uh, that, that was a bad thing to do. Now, the question is, going forward, can all that reclamation be done upfront? Uh, and, and, and I would submit that that would be not fair to the, the new operator coming in. Uh, and I, I actually had a chance to read, uh, the, the bylaw, the earth permit bylaw. And when you, it's in section, I think it's eight B, um, eleven. Talks about all permits will. Talks about all permits will include the provision for reclamation of the site in part during operations or in whole once excavation and earth removals have ceased. So I think that what the bylaw conterplace is that it's a both-and situation. You've got to allow the operator to work the land and also require him to reclaim as he does it. There's also a practical aspect of this that Louise mentioned to me tonight, which is one of the issues with what's happened here, both because of the neighbors' operations and him cutting into a hill, and because of this operator in 2012 not doing his job properly. There's a very steep pitch here. And so the areas that are most logical for reclaiming now, the only way to reclaim it is to start working that pile down, solving the slope issue at the same time. So I think going forward, if you see fit to grant the permit to my clients, that's what will be done. And I think there are certainly conditions could be placed on this to reclaim as you go, basically. As you take product off, you're also going to be doing a reclaiming coming in. Now, I want to step back a little bit about the issue about, is this grandfathering, quote-unquote? I don't want there to be any misimpression that my clients think that we can go on doing what we've done. The town can't regulate us. That's not the intent of what I was saying in the letter at all. But rather that as a prior non-conforming use that was in existence before this bylaw went into effect. And I understand it's a general bylaw. It wasn't part of the zoning law. But nevertheless, it's a general law that regulates use. And there is ample precedent in the law. It was a case of Powers versus Tharnstow was the lead case before the SJC. That says, yes, you can regulate, but no, you can't put a prior non-conforming use completely out of business. So what we're really about, I think, in this whole process is trying to work with you to figure out how to comply with reasonable regulations in a way that honors what the town's legitimate goals are, which is let's not despoil this land. Let's reclaim it over time. And let's do it in a responsible way that doesn't overburden the roads and all of that. And that's the goal here. So hopefully, this is going to be a win-win situation. Because Mr. Boucher has long-term visions for the property, not just doing what this gentleman did between 2012 and 2014, which was to take the gravy and leave. It was basically what happened. And it is a very poor situation. If there are any other questions about the letter, I'd be happy to answer them.
Well, I just want to reassure you, and Marinelli Sisters as well, that it's not the intention of this board to put that operation out of business. However, I think technically speaking, that it's really not considered a non-conforming use at this point, because concluding in 2012, when Mr. Howard abandoned his business, there's been more than the two years that that's necessary for it to have been in operation. So, you know, you've lost your zoning protection on that grandfathering, I believe. But that's not, that's not a debate. That's just, you know, an opinion I have.
Sure.
And, yeah. And so I think what we're doing here and what we're reviewing here with the permit is an actual permit for a new operation. So, you know, that's where we, that's how we view it.
Sure. And as you understand, I mean, Louise and Anne themselves don't have the capacity to do that new operation. So Mr. Boucher kindly agreed to come tonight. And if you have any questions that, you know, you might pose to him about how he looks at it. And I'm sure he'd look at the removal permit. And I don't think he'd be here unless he thought that he could comply with it.
Okay. Well, we'll wait for that for a moment. But any, buddy, any questions?
Just one quick question. The Copeland Page, the town's attorney, has weighed in on this grandfathering in 1990, in 2000. And they also did it with an injunction with a lawsuit against the town from the Fletcher Family Trust. So when that, that grandfathering that you talked about has been resolved from, it's from the town.
In court?
In court, from the town.
There's been an actual case?
Yep, 1997. I can send you the decision.
I'd like to see it.
Yeah. It should affect this. This shouldn't have an effect, but it does. It hasn't affected a general grandfather. Basically, what it's saying is that grandfathering was okay until you stopped operation because of interruption in operation for two years.
Well, I understand that. I understand that it was 2014 before we finally got control back. And then they did try to operate it for a little bit and had some people coming in. So then it really wasn't over, if you will, until early 2015. But I wasn't here, so I can't testify to this.
Okay. Any other questions from Mr. Wiggins? Any questions from the board for Mike Volbry?
No.
I guess I don't understand right now. Do we have to resolve anything with Mr. Wiggins?
No. This is a hearing. We take testimony.
Take it in.
And, you know. We deliberate later.
We're putting each other on the same page.
Okay. So before we get to Mr. Boucher, I don't want to lose the whole thread here. Bill, do you have any comments on the preceding conversation, which is more germane to what we're getting off?
I have to apologize to the applicant and to the board. We like to get our letters completed prior to your meetings. We just couldn't do that. So the letter that I gave you tonight, as Mark had mentioned, is a draft. It hasn't been reviewed by, we're always required more than one professional in the office to review. And this hasn't been doubly reviewed. So some of these comments may change dramatically. Or, and of course, there are some new comments. Most of the comments that say these items have been resolved, I think probably are pretty final. But in our opinion, the traffic report opened up some doors that unfortunately need to be addressed in great detail in the benefit of the traffic engineers present. We read the report as saying safety improvements are required. So I draw that analogy. The traffic engineer is an expert in this field, and he'll address you, I'm sure, in a bit. But when a traffic engineer says safety improvements are required, it immediately sends up red flags. And we say, safety are required. That's a precondition, therefore, for any gravel removal. And then I go on to say that if improvements are required in Pitcherville Road, there's a whole panoply of other permits that go along with that potentially. And while it doesn't, in my opinion, prohibit the issuance of your, of a gravel removal permit, it would have to be a precondition of the applicant to address. A lot of the technical things are being whittled down pretty effectively. I would say Meridian's doing a pretty thorough job of addressing some things. But we still have some technical items that we don't believe are fully resolved. And I think, honestly, I think engineer to engineer in my office and his office will probably get it down to the items that are listed in our letter as being discretionary to the board. You know, the waivers, the contents of the application, some of those things, and some final cleanup. So with the exception of the traffic report, the traffic engineer is here, and I certainly don't want to put words in his mouth when interpreting how we read his report. That's where we stand. And I assure you, the next meeting we'll have a formalized letter.
Okay.
Hopefully, these are resolving issues or leaving the discretionary items here.
Thank you, Bill. Mr. Mueller, would you care to address this with the, on the traffic report? Thank you for coming.
Mr. Mueller, can I make a suggestion that you come over here because we have a mic? Sorry to do that to you.
Not a problem.
I'm certain that that mic will pick you up better than over there.
Right. For the record, my name is Ron Mueller, Principal with Ron Mueller and Associates, and registered professional traffic engineer in the Commonwealth. And I've been asked to put this truck traffic assessment together. Basically, what this does is we've collected traffic count data on Pitcherville Road to document what the current level of traffic is. Done a speed study along the road, evaluated site distances at the driveway, intersection with Pitcherville Road to make sure this, what, determine what the site distances are like and whether or not improvements are needed. And also an inventory of the roadway condition itself along Pitcherville Road. In addition to that, obviously, estimating what the increase in traffic would be on Pitcherville Road with the proposed operation. I believe the applicant is requesting that up to 50 trucks be allowed per day. 50 trucks removing material from the site. Therefore, those 50 trucks also have to enter the site. So it's a total of 100 truck trips, 50 entering, 50 exiting. There's currently about 250 cars per day on Pitcherville Road. And that's based on the count that we've done with about 25 cars during the peak hour. That peak hour actually being from 6:00 to 7:00 p.m. The most volume of traffic, and you'll see in that graphic that I've provided in my report, that the highest traffic hours actually occur from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., or 4:00 to 8:00 p.m., where you have more than 20 cars per hour during each of those hours, and up to 25, like I said, during the peak hour. The, I believe here, bylaw states that gravel removal operations on weekdays occur from 6:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. So those trucks, those 50 trucks going in and out, would occur during basically off-peak hours. Because at the time when Pitcherville Road has the most volume of traffic, the operations, the earth removal operations would actually cease. So 50 trucks an hour over that nine and a half hour, not 50 trucks, 50 trucks per day over that nine and a half hour period of operation translates in roughly 10 truck trips per hour. Or if you want to put that in layman's terms, it's about six trucks, one at one truck per, for every six minutes on average. It varies a little bit depending on the operations, but that's roughly, just to put it in perspective, what you can expect to see on the road. This speed study that we've done, really was done for the purpose of evaluating what the site distance requirements are. We've measured speeds, average speeds of about 34 to 35 miles per hour. That's in the vicinity of the driveway itself with 85th percentile speeds. 85th percentile meaning that 85% of the cars are traveling at that speed or lower, and only 15% are traveling faster than that. The 85th percentile speed is, it was measured at about 39 miles per hour. The reason we measure the 85th percentile speed, that's the state standard and then the national standard by which site distances are evaluated. So we need to make sure we have adequate site distance for speeds up to 39 miles per hour. And if you look at Table 3 in my report, based on those speeds, we need a minimum of 280 feet of site distances in both directions from the driveway, which we have, based on my measurements. We meet that to the east of the intersection, and we far exceed that to the west of the intersection. What's limiting, so it meets the minimum requirements, but preferably you have more site distances than the minimum. And the desirable site distance is actually 335 feet. And that means that people only have to slow down slightly to avoid a collision, as opposed to coming to a complete stop. So what I've recommended, what's limiting site distance right now, is some vegetation that's overgrown on the side of the road, as well as like in a slope embankment on the side of the road that should be lowered a little bit. When you do that, we can achieve those desirable distances. And there's a graphic on Figure 2 that basically shows that area that should be cleared of vegetation and regraded. As far as the paving condition goes on Pitcherville Road, it's generally, the pavement is generally in good condition. It's generally between 22 and 24 feet in width, except there's a section of Pitcherville Road right near Gardner Road, Route 68, about a 400 or so foot section of road where it narrows down to about 18 feet, and the pavement is in very poor condition. What I've recommended is that that section of road be widened to 22 feet to match the pavement on either side of that section and repaved. Now, that is something that I heard you mention that it's, I've called it out as a safety problem. I don't call it out as a safety problem. I call it out as something that should be done. Should be done regardless of this project because the pavement is in such poor condition that it actually can, and the width of the road makes it uncomfortable to drive under current conditions, both for passenger cars and especially for trucks. So I've recommended that that section of road be repaved and widened slightly to match the pavement on either side of that section. That, basically, in a nutshell, is the traffic assessment.
I have one question for you.
Mm-hmm.
Well, I've got a couple, actually. The Page 6, first paragraph, second sentence, you compare the vehicle speeds to the vehicle, the results of the vehicle speed study on Route 140.
I'm sorry. That's a typo, yeah.
Okay.
I apologize for that.
It should be, do you remember what it should be?
It should be Pitcherville Road. That's what happens when you take sections out of another report.
All right.
That makes a difference.
Yes.
That's okay. I kind of figured it was, but I wanted to make sure we corrected it anyway.
Is that also true? I think it's mentioned somewhere else.
I hope not.
No, I didn't see anywhere else.
For the record, I'm embarrassed to say that I read a draft of this report, and I didn't pick up on it, so.
I don't read, I just pick out numbers. It didn't make sense.
For those who were here last time, you've also pointed out that the prior definition of traffic was 75 trucks, which was 150 trucks. If you were standing in your front door watching them going by. And that has been long.
Yes, correct.
And now you're at the 50 and 100. 50 trucks, but 100 trucks.
Truck trucks, correct.
Now, in that same section of the proposed volume, you mentioned the potential operator. Mr. Boucher, is that you? Is that what, are we mentioning you here, or is it?
Not particular.
Oh, okay.
It could be any operator.
All right. I just wanted to clarify, tie it in with Mr. Wiggins' statement. That's fine. No problem.
Another question in the same, a real.
Absolutely.
Another question in the same, along the same lane. I'm having a little trouble finding it. Oh. If I wanted some gravel, and I owned a big truck, can I call you up in the morning and say, I'm gonna come by with my truck, could you fill me up?
That might be a better question.
Is that how this business works? I don't know how the business works.
You're thinking in terms of adding extra trucks.
Yeah, it'd be like being going to graves and picking up a little stone.
I just wanna know how the business works. In other words, is it, is the operator the exclusive hauler? Or is anybody in the business of hauling gravel able to come in here and haul gravel? Get filled up and leave with it?
And that's in the context of fifty trucks per day, is that what you're getting at?
Well, yes, I'll get there eventually, but I'd like to understand how the business works. If I, if I had a big truck, do I call up in the morning?
The, the way it's worked historically is that as there was a need for sand and gravel material, those, those, you know, people would contact the pit owner-operator and make arrangements to have a truck come to the site to be loaded and.
Their truck.
Their truck to be loaded and then go over the scale and do all that stuff and then do, do their business and then, then head off. And over the years, there's been multiple different, you know, companies, you know, some big name companies like Agro Industries that had come in and, and, you know, had, you know, obtained a lot of sand and ground material from this pit for a particular need that they had. And it was, you know, it might be only for a short duration, but historically there had been, you know, they were experiencing, you know, as, as many as fifty trucks a day. You know, that's why we were, you know, reduced the number down from seventy-five, which obviously was not going over well with, with anyone at the May third meeting. And we, we brought it down to a, a number that was, yes, it was somewhat higher than the, the number in the original application and was somewhat higher than the number that was discussed in the 2012 permit, but only ten more trucks a day. So we thought that that was a reasonable, you know, compromise that would take care of, you know, the needs of operators that the applicant is talking to and, you know, as potential buyers, while at the same time being generally consistent with what was in the original permit and the original application.
All right, I, I may be mistaken, but I thought somewhere in here you said that you used to do it with twenty-yard dumps and now you do it with twenty-five yard dumps? Am I mistaken?
Twenty-five cubic yard dump trailers.
Yeah.
Yeah. I, I think, I think Ron was just going through a little bit of the history. You know, the evolution of the discussion.
But if I, if I.
The, the dump trailers are twenty to twenty-five cubic yards. And, you know, in the, back in the original application, the, I, I think there was some, some talk about, you know, you know, tri-axle trucks, you know, ten cubic yard type trucks, which we were generating some volume estimates, but the, in the last documentation on May third, that was increased to seventy-five trucks, which could be dump trailers, up to twenty-five cubic yard dump trailers. And we, the applicant would still reserve the right to use twenty-five yard dump trailers, but limiting to fifty trucks a day.
There's a question on the study that you did is, you, you only did it two days, you only did a traffic study for two days. It just seems to me a little bit light. And you think, with those two days raining and that would have affected the speed of cars, I mean, it would have affected a lot of things. So why, is it, is it a standard to do it just two days or I?
It is actually a standard.
Okay.
That is a standard, yes.
Were the two days raining or was that, I mean, we had a lot of rain lately? Because that will affect the speed.
It would, well, it would affect the speed, but the, the site distances are based, the, the requirements of site distances are based on wet pavement conditions.
Oh, okay, great.
And is it a Massachusetts state standard?
Yeah, it's a Massachusetts, Mass D O T standard as well as a national, it was D O T standard.
Federal standard?
Yep.
Bill, yeah, question?
So just to expound on what Mark had said, remember that you actually get peak loading on traffic, especially these trucks. They wanna be there at the opening of the pit. They're gonna be sitting there idling, if they're allowed to sit there idling. And you're getting a stack effect first thing in the morning because they need to get out of the pit as soon as they can to get to the construction site as early in the mornings as possible. So you're gonna have a stack effect first thing in the morning and then those, those trucks, depending upon where they're going, might have a cycle stack effect where that they, a group of them arrive back to the site if they're all going to the same haul site. So, well, I'm not contradicting anything that he's saying.
Two bunches.
Yeah, you, you have to understand that on occasion, you're gonna have a, if there's a big, big gravel need, they're building a big site or a road, they're all gonna show up at the pit and the, the trucks are gonna wait to be loaded and they're gonna go out of there like that and then they're gonna come back to.
But the reality, Bill, is that they're not gonna be stacked up too much because there's, historically, there's only been one loader on the, on the, on the pit. So the trucks aren't gonna be wanting to be sitting there out on Pitcherville Road waiting to come in when they might have to wait a considerable amount of time to get loaded.
Historically, they have.
Yeah, the other, the other thing is, is you don't have in your, your application, they're only gonna put one loader on there. You're not gonna, you're not gonna do that. The other question I have, what's, and it was actually, what Bill was saying, is they're gonna be stacking trucks. Did your traffic study indicate what's gonna happen at Pitcherville Road and Route sixty-eight? And the other part of the question is, what's gonna happen with the traffic on Route sixty-eight? Did you do a traffic study in the effect that stacking of trucks, maybe in the first hour of twenty trucks is gonna have an effect on this Route sixty-eight, in particular the center of school, where a lot of these trucks are gonna be going through when the school is loading at eight-thirty in the morning? Did your traffic study address any of these things at all? Especially, the biggest thing is the traffic at, into Pitcherville Road at peak hours. I mean, you're gonna have traffic jams, you're gonna have, is it gonna need a light there, you're gonna have to have a pop there. I do know, if you, if you're taking, if you're heading south on Route sixty-eight up that hill from Pitcherville Road and cars are coming down there at forty-five miles an hour, it's not gonna be pretty, especially if it's raining.
What, what we did do is a safety analysis of that intersection, Pitcherville Road and Route sixty-eight, to make sure that there's adequate line of sight based on the speed of traffic on that road. And what we found actually is that there is more than adequate site distance, the speed's up to seventy miles an hour. So I believe that intersection will continue to operate safely. We did not do a count at that intersection and an analysis of the intersection, if you will. But given the level of traffic on Pitcherville Road and the increase in traffic as a result of this project, you're not even gonna come close to meeting warrants, for example, for the installation of a traffic light. I mean, you need to have two hundred cars an hour on Pitcherville Road in order to come close to meeting the warrants. You have currently twenty-five, you're adding ten more, actually five more.
Except for the stacking thing. You could actually have ten trucks sitting at the end of Pitcherville Road right, ready to turn.
Well, I mean, it takes, and Mark, maybe you can chime in on this, but I mean, it takes time to load each truck, obviously. And as soon as the, the trucks are loaded, they will leave the site. I don't know what, and maybe Steve, you have an idea of how, what the time is and how long it takes to load a truck? But is it ten minutes, fifteen minutes?
About five to seven minutes.
Five to seven minutes? So you're not gonna have a situation where you have a, a long line of trucks exiting the site at the same time. And in this seven minutes that it takes to load a truck and they leave the site, by the time the next truck gets to the intersection, they're gonna be gone.
Well, you haven't been on Route sixty-eight.
Mark?
It's eight o'clock in the morning. Yeah, I have a few more, but go ahead.
How many trucks are gonna be stacked in the project site? I mean, what distance are we talking from Pitcherville Road to where the, where the section of the project is? What's, what's the shortest distance?
Honestly, if I was to even answer, it would be all speculation at this point. You know, I, I can tell you what the distance is, but I can't tell you how many trucks are gonna be stacked up in the pit at any given time.
I'm thinking, I mean, we've entered the site, so it's pretty open. How many trucks would you stack inside so you're not stacking on Pitcherville Road and Route sixty-eight?
I can't possibly imagine that trucks would be stacking on, on Pitcherville Road.
The issue, the issue there is the, the pit opens at six. The truck drivers get there at five-thirty and the gate is locked. And that, so that's a historical issue and it can be addressed.
Right, but I mean, I thought the hours are six-thirty to four.
They show up well before the pits open because they are, as you know, as a big one. I did have a question for you, I know you didn't do a level of service, so I expect the answer. But in your opinion, do you think there's a level of service reduction at the junction of Pitcherville and Route sixty-eight as a result of this development?
Bill, could you explain that? Would you explain that for us, please?
I'm gonna let him explain it.
I just meant the level of service.
Level of service is the designation of the ability of an intersection to process traffic. So you have, it ranges from level A, which is the best operation, the least amount of delay for traffic exiting Pitcherville Road, to a level F, which obviously is a lot of delay. And, I mean, with twenty-five, and I don't know what the directional distribution is offhand, but, I mean, sixty-eight percent heading west, sixty-three percent heading westbound towards the site, right? And that's during the peak hour. So only thirty-seven percent are heading.
Thirty-two, sixty-eight, thirty-two.
No, 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 I'm looking at the, the traffic count we did. All right, we have twenty-five cars total on Pitcherville Road during the peak hour. Sixty-three percent of those during the peak hour are actually heading towards the site. So only thirty-seven percent of them are heading towards Route sixty-eight.
Am I missing?
So thirty-seven percent of twenty-five, six, seven, eight cars maybe, are heading towards Route sixty-eight and wanting to make a turn.
Per hour?
Per, uh, peak hour. Less than that during other hours of the day. So add to that the five additional trucks that will be generating during the peak hour. Actually, won't, won't even be during the peak hour because it'll be off-peak because it'll already be outside the operating hours, only up till four P M. But regardless, so now you have maybe fifteen, eighteen cars approaching? I mean, for the life of me, I can't imagine that that volume of traffic is gonna cause a level of service issue. I mean, we didn't do any level of service analysis. But, I mean, with those volumes, I mean, I've, I've done traffic engineering for thirty-one years now and when I look at volumes like that, I don't care what the volume of traffic on Route sixty-eight is, you're not gonna have a problem. You might sit there for a while mating, waiting to make the turn, depending on the level of traffic and obviously the speed of traffic on sixty-eight. But you're not gonna run into a situation where you always have another long backup of traffic, not with fifteen to eighteen cars exiting Pitcherville Road.
I just wanted him to put that on the record, that's all.
Well, they used to, so. Did your, your traffic study address pedestrian traffic at six-thirty in the morning, children walking up to the bus at Route sixty-eight? What's gonna happen to the kids on Route sixty-eight, uh, walking up there?
I did not address that, no.
It was, I believe it addressed indirectly by talking about the width of the roadway, so that three to four hundred feet.
Do you think it would be safe for this young man here to walk up the road at six-thirty in the morning in the dark with tractor trailers coming down on him from Route sixty-eight?
Safer?
Would it be safe for him to do it? Would you let your child do it?
Depending on the age of my child.
That's how, that's how old he is.
How old is he?
Eleven.
Do you walk all the way to the corner?
No.
They pick you up in front of the house?
Yeah.
Almost every bus stop in downtown.
Doesn't matter. My brother wakes up at five-thirty, I guess.
And what does he have to do? Does he have to walk up?
Yeah.
So he walks up to this intersection on Route sixty-eight? How old is he?
Oh, fourteen.
He's more than a quarter, or more than a half?
Ninety-seven.
Um, so that hasn't been addressed yet.
Well, I mean, but in a sense, like Mark said, we did recommend that that section of road be widened to match the, the cross-section of the remaining.
There's no sidewalks, no.
There's no sidewalks anywhere along.
There's no banks and all that stuff.
But this, these, these are existing conditions, right?
Yeah. Except that there aren't as many trucks in the existing condition.
There used to be.
Ron, no, go ahead, Tom, sorry.
This thing, this, this document produced is called a truck traffic assessment. You asked for a waiver of the truck traffic study and what I just wanna understand, is this assessment equal to a study? As we defined it in our law, our, our.
This assessment, as I read your requirements for a study, meets those requirements.
So this can be called a study?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
One more here, Ed, can you guys?
Yeah, I did. That four hundred foot section that you suggest should be wide. I got a couple of questions on that. A, who's gonna pay for it? B, are you going, is anybody that's living in that section gonna lose any of their property? And how long before that new section of road is torn up again from the weight of these trucks?
And repaved.
I'm sorry?
And repaved.
Yeah.
Well, I don't know what, every road is, has a right-of-way. And I don't know what the right-of-way of Pitcherville Road is in that section. But, I mean, the road, that section of road is eighteen feet wide. You wanna widen it by four feet? I have to imagine that you could still do that widening within the right-of-way. I can't imagine that the right-of-way is that close to the road. But I don't, and honestly, I don't know the answer to that question. But I would imagine that it can be done within the right-of-way so that people don't lose their front yard. Who's gonna pay for it? Well, I mean, it, this is an existing condition, something that the town should have undertaken a long time ago, I presume. As I understand it, there's actually a plan to repave Pitcherville Road in two years? Maybe that can be done at that time to incorporate the widening. Maybe the applicant would be willing to participate in that. That's not up to me to decide. As far as how long can the road carry truck traffic without deteriorating again? That depends entirely on the subbase that's built. You know, the, the more gravel and pavement that you add, the longer the lifetime of the, of that section of road.
So as long as we have Mr. Mueller here with, Ed, you had your hand up, was like that?
Well, I couldn't wait till you, the board finishes all that.
Well, I think if, if anybody, because we're talking about this traffic study, it's gonna come back up again, so we might as well continue with the discussion now, so please, Ed.
Ed, twenty-three East Hubble Pond Road. I used to own the gravel pit on Soya Pond, Bent Pond and had a similar situation with trucks coming out on Route sixty-eight. Probably a similar, similar volume as you speak of. What, what I did was, or what they asked me to do, and it wasn't any problem to do, and, and I think the site distance from Soya Pond is similar to the site distance you have on Route sixty-eight. I say similar, I have a measuring. It would be similar, I would think. What, what they did was, what they asked me to do was to have a sign put up, trucks, trucks exiting, I think it was.
Yep.
Or, and had that sign at a particular distance from my road so that vehicle, vehicle and traffic could at least know that trucks would be pulling out on Route sixty-eight. But it, it was similar probably to what you're talking about. And that was back in two thousand and six, though, so we may have more traffic on sixty-eight today. But that, that ran for about five years.
And for, for major purposes, it's not that far away from Pitcherville Road? What is it, a mile up the road, less?
Oh, not even, no, probably quarter mile away from.
North of Pitcherville Road. Okay.
The other input I was gonna say was, I was, I was here in town when they closed the landfill on Templeton Road and I believe the material they brought in to do that was from the Irving paper, Irving paper slurry from the paper process and I believe they used that as what they thought was an impervious barrier. It was to seal the pit, though. So that's just the type of material back at that time.
Would anybody else from the public have a question for the traffic engineer or the engineers? Go ahead, Laura.
Hi, I'm Laura Foley on Route twelve Pitcherville Road, very close to where that eighteen-foot stretch of road is. Was any consideration taken for the grade of the road in your study? Because historically, when the trucks would come down the hill from sixty-eight toward the pit, they would employ brake brakes to slow down, which is a real pain in the neck when it happens at six-thirty or before. And coming up the hill, when they're fully laden, they go a lot slower. So when they would take the right onto sixty-eight to go toward Worcester, they would be very slow in getting up the grade to get up to the top of the hill. What do you make of that?
Well, I, I can't speak to the brake, braking system that the trucks employ and how loud it is. I mean, it is what it is and that's obviously a consideration for the board as well. As far as making the turn onto sixty-eight, the right turn, I don't recall that, that, I mean, that hill happens further, further down. That's not right at the intersection.
Certainly not, but the.
So by the time they get to that incline, I mean, trucks always travel slower and are supposed to be traveling slower. But by the time they get to that grade, I would imagine that they'd have enough time to at least not be a nuisance to traffic.
In my memory, they take the hill very slowly. They don't have time to get up to speed and I wouldn't expect them to try to make the forty-five mile an hour speed in that short time. It has usually been, I'd describe it as a leisurely stroll up the hill, very slow because they're, they're heavy trucks, they can't go any faster.
There's also a passing zone there, right?
Yes.
Laura, are you describing a hill on Pitcherville Road or is a hill on sixty-eight when you turn?
Both.
Okay.
Both. The hill that goes past my house on twelve Pitcherville Road going up towards sixty-eight is a, a grade that affects the truck traffic. It's not insurmountable, but it's a pretty decent grade. And then when going onto sixty-eight toward Worcester, there is a, a grade. And I don't know if they're similar or not, but both of them tended to slow down the trucks, in my experience.
Well, the road south has quite a long grade, Route sixty-eight.
South is towards Worcester.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, right.
Going north, it's pretty flat, but.
Right, right.
Should take them a while to get up to thirty-five.
Should take them a while to get up to thirty-five with a heavy load on them.
Yeah.
So essentially, what you have is a slower vehicle in a forty-five mile an hour lane, and there's your, there's your cautionary issue.
You have slower truck traffic and a faster car traffic. But that's why. Right, but that's why we did the site distance evaluation at that intersection to make sure we have more than adequate site distance, even for trucks.
I have another question. Uh, may I ask what days the, the traffic study was performed?
The counts were done Tuesday, May twenty-third, and Wednesday, May twenty-fourth.
Phil, did you have another comment? Did I see your hand up, Phil?
No.
All right, Tom?
I'm looking at page four. Um, let me just read a sentence under the end of the first paragraph there. Based on the traffic counts collected on Pitcherville Road and the proposed hours of operation, which I'll remind everybody was six-thirty to four, um, the additional truck traffic will occur outside of the peak traffic hours and during times when the volume of traffic on Pitcherville Road is minimal. Um, the peak value is, it peaks out at twenty-five, but if you take the average of the four hours you call the peak period, it's less than that. Twenty-two or twenty-three. But the, your use of the word minimal to describe the, um, actual hours of operation from six-thirty to four, what do you mean by minimal?
Well, I guess it's a sort of a relative term, but.
Yeah.
Um, by minimal, I mean that, uh, operationally, that volume of traffic, that level of traffic would not cause any capacity issues either along the road or at any intersection along that road. Um, it, I guess in, in, in my world, I deal with typically much larger volumes of traffic, which is typically why traffic studies are required. And, uh, to evaluate and, and to do an intersection analysis to see what is the impact, how do we mitigate it, what do we need to do? Uh, but when you have at most twenty-five cars in one hour, um, on a road like this, um, to me, that is a minimal volume of traffic.
All right, my, my math.
I hope that answers it.
My mathematical definition of minimal is I took all the little numbers for each hour from six-thirty to four and added them up and divided, and came up with about fourteen and a half trucks an hour during that, what you call minimal period.
Sounds about right.
So with pile six on top of that, you come up with about twenty.
Yep.
So, am, am I trying to figure out if I'm doing this right?
Yes. Yep.
Very good, thank you.
Hey, a couple of things I wanna make clear, however. The hours of operation in the bylaw are stated six-thirty to four, however, that is not necessarily hours of operation that this particular operation, if it is permitted, may operate under. We have discretion in the hours that we set, so that's not cast in stone.
Correct.
And speaking of relative, I have to say that although in the rest of the world, thirty-five cars or twenty-five cars on a lot in Hubbardston, put that into perspective, and it's a serious situation on Pitcherville Road. It's a high-volume traffic. We don't have a lot of cars and everything being relative, so it does make a difference with us.
Especially compared to Hockington.
Yes, but, although I remember.
Lot more traffic in Hocken.
No, it's all relative.
I remember when Hockington was almost that small.
Yes.
All right, I'd like to wrap this up. Anybody else got any questions for the traffic engineer so we can excuse him?
I just, one, one more question. You, you didn't do or report some other source of information for the actual count on Route sixty-eight.
We didn't do a count on Route sixty-eight.
Okay. I think one was available in the town records somewhere.
Just, just so everyone knows, Monticuce Regional Planning is planning on doing a new study this year, a new traffic account to update the last one, ten years ago. The traffic is, appears, it was, for us, it appears. I live on High Street, you should just drive on on Route sixty-eight and not even stop, and I'll, you can wait ten minutes.
Oh, no, there's a stop sign there.
Oh, yeah. Oh, the police.
Oh, you don't use that stop sign?
Oh, yeah, here we go again.
Yes, Earl.
I have a question on widening the road, because I believe I live where it's probably the narrowest, and it's pretty good bankings down on both sides. Um, four feet doesn't sound like a lot. If you come back four feet, I'm not gonna have a driveway anymore. I got the worst driveway on the road as it is. How would you do? Would you put repainting walls, or you just slope it back, or?
I believe on the, uh, south side of Pitcherville Road is where you have, uh, the row of trees, um, that embankment, you're absolutely right, goes down, uh, quite a bit. Um, so it might be, uh, beneficial to widen on the north side.
That's me.
Where the homes are, correct.
That's my driveway.
Correct. But again, I mean, there's a, a portion of, uh, land that the town owns before it becomes your property. Obviously, we'll have to, whoever ends up undertaking this work will have to put some plans together, uh, make sure that all the work can be done within the town layout. There's utility poles that need to be moved, um, but obviously, those are questions that need to be resolved before the work is undertaken.
Yeah, they just put that new pole in for the solid system a couple of summers ago.
All right, well, thank you very much, Mr. Mueller. Appreciate it. Mark, do you have any other comments? Wanna wrap anything up?
Not a doubt.
I'd like to. Introduce Mr. Boucher.
Yep.
Are you all set?
Last one. I did ask the engineer here what the distance was internally from the entry to the pit.
Yeah, I could respond to that.
It's thousand fifty feet.
But that's our town-owned land as well, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So in other words, you're thinking that instead of stacking on Pitcherville Road, they could stack inside the, the entryway? Okay, fine, great, yeah. All right, uh, Mr. Steve Boucher is here, and he's identified as the potential new operator, or a potential new oper- a potential. And, uh, if you'd like to perhaps give an overview of what you have in mind, that'd be appreciated.
Um, well, generally, my business.
You got it. It will.
It's been flying in our face.
Poor girl with a microphone, though.
So, so my business is not a, a typical gravel removal company. Our company, in two thousand and six, started into the athletic field, um, industry and golf industry, making products for those two industries. We, we service very little contractors, you may say, or asphalt or concrete plants with their materials, because that's, creates a lot of volume. Our typical day in a much larger operation, um, in another community is about thirty-five trucks a day. We may see a day that's fifty, but it's very rare. In the winter time, um, when December rolls around, these golf courses shut down, athletic fields don't do any work. So typically, from December fifteenth, December twentieth, all the way till March, um, there's very little traffic. Possibly three or five trucks a day in those months. Um, there are peak days, um, that happen, um, but it's a generally thirty-five to forty-truck day is what we, uh, what we deal with. There really would never be any stacking. We control all the trucks that either remove the material, um, bring, bring material to us to make a certain product, um, being a topsoil material that needs to be mixed with some sand. So, you know, we, we schedule our trucks sometimes a week in advance, definitely a day in advance. So today, at, by noon time, we know tomorrow's schedule. So if it gets overloaded, we know to cut it back. So we basically control the trucks. There are the occasion, company that calls and says, I'm working on a golf course, I re-insure the material, can I come and pick some up? And generally, we'll accommodate, but, um, it's a very controlled environment. So like I said, even picking up material, we'll actually even load our material at night. A lot of our material goes down south, goes into the city. We service many colleges. We've all watched the Red Sox, the material in the infield mix, in the warning track mix, we service that, those, those types of facilities. Um, that being a good account. I'm not supposed to even advertise that we service them, but, um, but, uh. Uh, but we do a lot of, um, non-professional teams, a lot of colleges, um, with their materials. So, uh, getting back to trucks, we load the trucks at night, park them loaded, so they can leave at three or four in the morning from my garage, which is located in Leamster. So, there wouldn't even be a big influx of, of trucks in the morning. It would be, you know, you may typically see between seven, and we don't start before, before seven o'clock. The pit opens at six-thirty, we get prepared, so when the trucks get there, they drive right in the gate. They get loaded, we make sure they're stacked accordingly with no stacking. Um, we've addressed this in, in our other facility. We've operated there nineteen years approximately, um, without incident, without accidents, um, getting onto a busy street, a busy highway. Um, we're pretty proud of our, of our safety record. Um, and, and our neighbors and our communities are, come first to us. Um, we, we've done, I think, a lot of, a lot of decent things for the town that we operate in. Ball fields, um, all sorts of different things. Not to, to pat the company on the back, but we, we enjoy giving back to the community that we get to work in. Um, so those are some of the things that hopefully, if this turns out that we are the operator, um, that we can work closely with the town where if they, they're in need of certain things, or we can help out in certain ways, that's what we, we're all about. Talking about, a little more about safety, our drivers are trained, um, once a month, we have safety classes for them that we conduct. We give them handouts. Um, our insurance company is very strict nowadays on these trucks because of accidents and things like that. Um, we, all our trucks are GPS, um, driven. I can pull up on my phone right now, tell you if any of my trucks are driving. It reports to me if they're going over the speed limit, um, even driving erratically, uh, taking a curve too quick. The, the GPS knows it, and it reports back to us and, and sends us, uh, an alert, basically. So all our drivers are basically three, three strikes, you're out. If they're speeding, driving erratically, or sudden stops or starts, we know it, and they're, they're terminated at that point. Um, we've never terminated anybody for that. So they're, they're very conscientious, these, these drivers nowadays. I, my hats off to them. I've had a CBL license, um, the first license I ever got was a, a class A license. And I don't think I care to do it in the environment that these drivers drive in now. So they, they're very proud of their job. There's a shortage of drivers, and I know why, because it's a very tedious job. Um, they're out there with a, a rig that weighs a lot. They're responsible for other lives. So we've had two or three accidents recorded. They weren't even our, under our drivers' faults. Um, but we stepped up and did what we had to do, happened in the city, or whatever they, wherever they happened. So I just want the town to know, that's how we operate. It wouldn't be a typical gravel removal operation. You wouldn't see, we don't, they're building a, a building, and you're hauling thousands and thousands of yards to the same facility. Uh, generally doesn't happen. When we service a golf course, if they're redoing all their bunkers, they do it over time. So it's a very slow process. We might get a job, it's two thousand yards, but it takes them three months to get there. So it's a load here, two loads there, um, it's as the golf course contracted needs it. So it's very spread out. And it's, it's, if the company's called the Weeman Specialty Source, 'cause it is very special, we have to be very clear, we have to be very organized. Just not dig here, dig there, get the trucks loaded as quick as you can, because in the volume, in the, in the sand and gravel business, that's the name of the game, move as much volume, because that's how you're gonna get paid, that's how you make money. That's not how this business works. You have to take your time, do it properly, take care of the material, um, and, and just do a good job. And that's how our company operates.
Steve, mostly your drivers work directly for you? You're not hiring?
We have, we have a certain, maybe call it eight operators we go to and hire their trucks. We own and operate, uh, fourteen trucks. And those operators are the ones we typically use every single time, because we've trained them how to repair their body, to get loaded, to deliver the material, how to deal with the golf course superintendent, so it's always the same guys. Once we employ them for the year, they basically stay with us for the year. We may, next year, we may add two, and two may drop off for whatever reason. But it's typically all our trucks and all the trucks that we control.
So Steve, you're saying you, you don't operate a, if I would, a typical public sand and gravel operation? You would not operate it as this way, as that way?
No, no, we don't, um.
And you would not operate it, if you were to operate this, as a typical sand and gravel operation?
Yes. No, we, we would not do that.
Oh, you mean tricked you.
What we would do, however, if it was a local community, being Hubbardston, being Gardner, um, that needed sand for the winter, and we could make that sand for them and work with the communities, that might be a more other-type situation. But those are the other, you know, that's the, the rarity. You know, uh, back in the day, we would service upwards of twenty-five communities with their winter sand. In the two, early two thousands to two thousand and five, two thousand and seven, um, last winter, we serviced two. So those are the two or three trucks per day that leave. We might go to Framingham, um, bring them three loads of winter sand, Concord. There's certain communities that, uh, just call us, they have an open bid, um, they don't even go out to bid. They just, they use their open, whatever bid law they have, and call for an ex amount of dollars of material at a time. So those are about the only, um, sand and gravel-type operations that would be typically, you'd see that. If, if a local, if a local homeowner wanted some material, we would try to accommodate that type of thing. Basically, the people in Hubbardston.
Well, just, just to make you feel at home, as, as if you were in your box at, at Fenway Park. You're, you're actually being broadcast on the Hubbardston Jumbotron as we speak.
Steve, uh, we talked about this, um, you, you own the land over sixty-eight at a lots of this property.
Correct, yeah.
And we talked in the past about putting a driveway or a road or something through there. What's the possibility of that happening?
If we became the operator of this property, I would pursue that immediately to put a driveway access through our property on sixty-eight. And basically, the, the big, uh, the big, um, I guess, stone in the way is really water, to, to get across the, the small brook there.
Hubbardston Brook, yeah.
Um, I've had two different engineers, not Mark, but, um, other engineers look at it and tell me if it's doable. And they said, yes, it's very doable, but it's permits. You, you need to go to the state, you need to go to the local conservation. I, I see it as very doable on a construction side of it. I just didn't know if it was doable permitting, on the permitting side of it. But we would pursue that, yes.
So if we could help you with something like that, to try to move that along, because that's a lot of these people from Pitcherville Road, one of the.
Exactly.
Big thing, would alleviate a lot of these issues and problems, right?
Yes, yeah. We would pursue that if need. If we, um, were satisfied with the conditions of the permit, and the ladies and I were able to get to a final agreement, um, then that would be our next step. Is, is to pursue that and utilize our property to get directly onto, um, sixty-eight.
Right, on sixty-eight.
Eddie, I'm gonna throw a open to the general public for general questions for anybody who's here, if you'd like to make a statement. Go ahead, Bill.
I'm the consultant for the planning board, so I just have a couple of questions. I don't, I'm not leading you on or anything, but, um.
Don't leave him.
Yes. So this is a zone two, which is a watershed protection.
Yes.
And I know your company, you have a great reputation. You do fantastic work. Uh, but the materials that you would be mixing, would they include inorganic fertilizers? Would they include compost?
Compost.
And other leachable materials? You see where I'm going?
Yeah, compost material, leaf compost material.
That would be a concern, probably more to the city of Gardner, 'cause it's their well. But if you're using anything that's leachable mixed exterior to the ground, that's also a problem, because there's a specialized wet so much pollution prevention plant is required for gravel permit. And those kind of things would have to be carefully addressed and looked at, acting as an agent of the board, and I just wanted to put that out there.
Right, no, we'd have to, that would be, that's a field breaker for me. So that would have to be addressed if we could, if we could, um, overcome that. I mean, I look at my materials, uh, less, um, I don't know, less volatile, I don't know if volatile is the right word, than the material being used to. I don't know if volatile is the right word, than the material being used to reclaim the surface of the pit.
Yeah, but that material has passed the muster because of the chemical composition and the proven it to the DEP. And I'm not saying that yours hasn't. But composted manure is fine. Manure that hasn't been completely composted is a potential biological hazard if it gets into the groundwater. So I just find...
We use a leaf compost. That's our product that we have to use, leaf compost.
I don't even see an issue with that personally.
Do you have an analysis of it?
All our materials, that's the other thing, all our materials are tested. We have our own, I call it a lab. It could fit three, four times. But we test our material daily and all our material is certified by the PGA. And then all our soils material is tested by UMass and Mars. Probably once a week.
What are you tested for?
They're testing to meet that, meets the specifications of the superintendent's spec.
At the golf course?
At the end user.
Do you do a heavy metal run every now and then?
Yes, yep. Yeah, they can't have, think about it, these guys have, the superintendent has an obligation to his company, his golf course. He doesn't need his grass turning brown or...
Nobody eats that grass.
Yeah, that's true.
Just as kind of another point, the permit that's been applied for doesn't accommodate what you're describing.
Right.
So that, that would be probably a modification.
Exactly.
Okay.
And I didn't ask them to modify the permit for me because they need to get through stuff. They need to get the ball and get on base, and on on base.
Steve?
I do agree with the consensus of the board. Personally, for my family, if the main entrance and exit to the pit were through your property, budding sixty-eight, I would have no problem with an operation here. It's the heavy truck traffic on my street, one truck every six minutes that I want to avoid.
I can understand that.
Anybody else like to make a comment? Oh, Tom, you got another question? Go ahead.
Well, not another, you didn't let me pass my last one.
Taking a hint tonight.
About a year ago now, well, September nineteenth, you spent an evening over in this, right here, in the select board meeting.
Wait a minute, Tom, let's not go there unless it's, because anything to do with this hearing on this, because he's not, he's not part of the permit application. I don't want to get into anything with Mr. Boucher in that context.
Okay, I won't ask Boucher. How about if I ask this engineer?
If there's something to do with the hearing, yeah, sure.
The concept, it was put forth that this reclamation process was in some way an obstacle because it was like having a contractor seed the lawn and level it all up and then dig it up and put the foundation in. And I'd like to understand if you interpret our bylaw that requires working in a three-acre area and then moving over to another three-acre area and reclaiming as you go, as you dig away and reclaim. Would you use the same analogy to describe the reclamation process? I.e., you're working against yourself in some way?
We have not objected to or sought a waiver to the requirement of that stage process. Even, we've even talked about doing, you know, working back and forth with Bill about staging in the permanent reclamation area and doing that in, I think Places recommended four phases to do the permanent restoration area originally. And we actually, when that area got a little smaller, offered it up as three, doing it in three phases. And Bill said that he stood by his original recommendation. That's why I was saying that he needs, some of those things need to be revisited. Because three's obviously better than four, so...
But we're not requiring you to do something and then destroy what you do and then do over here.
No, and we're not saying that. The only, the only thing that we were concerned and objecting to is to have to do all the reclamation first before any extraction can occur. That is not financially feasible to do.
All the regulation, meaning the whole pit? Or just the original eight acres?
Well, there's the original eight acres that we're talking about doing, beginning immediately. But as extraction is starting to begin, that work will begin, you know, right away.
So from what our, when our RMI was here, they said that was like two weeks' worth of work. So if you, day one, you started, you're gonna start doing some gravel removal or something, so that two weeks later...
There's some preparation time.
Well, I'm just, what they were saying is two weeks' worth of work, so...
To spread the material.
We're not saying it's six months it's gonna take. We're saying it's gonna happen within, within a short period of time of opening. And within, say, two months, this thing should, that original eight point nine acres should be reclaimed. Is that a correct statement?
Well, I think what we were talking about, and even your consultant recommended, is that it be broken, the permanent area be broken into chunks that are, like each chunk be done with each phase, so...
I'm not talking about any of these additional phases. The original 2012 permit at eight acres of regulation...
And this one does too.
Yeah, I know. And I'm saying to you, is that original eight acres, if we issued you the permit?
It will start right away?
It would start right away, so we, I'm not talking about the fifty acres that, eight acres.
There's, my understanding is there's enough RMI material on the property now to be able to probably do the first, that first phase. So that would start right away. And, but as these phases are built out, then that's how this would progress. And potentially faster. You know, but we were asked to provide a schedule and to how that would be implemented and phased out. And we thought what was recommended by your consultant was reasonable. So, and another thing in Bill's latest letter, he mentioned that work was still proposed within the riverfront area, so a conservation commission filing would be required. I respectfully disagree with him. The May third letter, our plan changed, moved all work out of that 200-foot riverfront area, so no work is proposed in conservation commission jurisdiction area. And that's consistent with Natural Heritage's request to have open sand areas in close proximity to the wetlands and the brook.
Mr. Boucher, you're aware of all this, I assume, the reclamation? And you would be working with them to do that and be part of your...
Yeah, if we move forward.
If you move forward, yeah.
All right, great, well, thank you. Oh, Ed, go ahead.
I just have a concern about the comment that Mr. Bracknell made about that bylaw was put in place within the last two years. It's very stringent upon any materials coming into Hubbardston. And does the planning board, is the planning board gonna waiver that bylaw? Or require of someone doing appeals?
That bylaw, I think you're referring to is the one that was implemented last year, the general bylaw. It stands alone. It does not, it does, it is not included in the gravel removal bylaw. And it's specific for contaminated materials and they're identified. Is that the one you're talking about?
I don't think it's just for contaminated materials. If it had, what, fifty yards or something like that, if it had a quantity that...
Mark, you wrote that up. Do you remember what you put in there? I mean, we could probably draw it up.
I can clarify it one second.
Go ahead.
The material covered by the bylaw that was passed last June is called Massachusetts Contingency Plan Materials. And it has a, there is a document, the Massachusetts Contingency Plan, was it 940 or something? And it has a big, long list of what's not allowed, or what's covered by that law, I should say. And that list is what's not allowed. It's, and I'm gonna make an assumption. It's significantly more contaminated than what I would expect Mr. Boucher to produce with his lab, or show by his lab results. I'd like to see some lab results, by the way. But it's a grade of material that is from contaminated sites, excavated from contaminated sites. And metalworking...
That was the proposal, but the actual bylaw...
I suggest you read it.
Very restrictive.
I suggest you read it.
And the question came up whether even, whether even septic sand could be brought in from the outside.
You have to read it, Ed.
You know what, Ed? You're confusing that with the other proposed bylaw that was withdrawn, that Mary Ann DePinto recommended, where she was going through the specifics of that type of dirt you're talking about for septic system. And that never got onto the floor for a vote.
Tom's right, that bylaw that was an act of, she had nothing to do with material other than hazardous material.
Right, the hazardous one.
All material probably has a component.
That's the one page for that bylaw.
That looks like the whole bylaw.
That's the whole bylaw.
All right, folks, well, thanks very much. I'd like to wrap this up. We have another hearing that we have to continue with. Unless there's anything else really pertinent, I'm gonna accept a motion to continue this hearing because we still have more reviews to do with Mr. Murray's consultants. And come back next, perhaps next month. We're looking at July.
Ready.
Year is flying. Our meeting would be July the fifth. The next meeting is July the fifth.
Sure?
July the fifth, really?
What day of the week is it?
It's a Wednesday.
July fourth is Tuesday.
So Monday and Tuesday are the holidays?
That's right.
Yeah. Are you working that day, Bill? You got the day off.
I'll let you know.
Well, that's the next scheduled meeting. We can adjust.
There won't be anything else to talk about.
I just had a question or a clarification. You do want me to start drafting a permit between now and then?
I think, I think you're close to it. I, you know, I'd like to withhold that answer until I review everything tonight and talk with you about what you seem, after you had a careful opportunity to review everything, what you seem to think you may need or not, all right?
Rush still has his second review of what he gave us.
Right.
That needs to be, it's draft only.
So let's, unless we're... Now, see, the 12th of July, that's the Battle of the Boing Day in Northern Ireland. So I'm not sure. I think, you know, we have a conflict either way, you know? No, it's right there. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna suggest we continue this hearing to July the fifth, Wednesday, July the fifth, which is our next scheduled board meeting. And is there a motion to that effect?
What time?
Seven PM.
Mr. Chairman, I would ask that if you could review the materials, talk to Bill as you suggested, and we would greatly appreciate if we could, if the permit could start being drafted for consideration that night. Because, you know, realistically, if everything is looking good on the fifth, then it's gonna have to be continued now to August, just to review a permit, a draft permit.
Well, I agree with you whole highly. And I don't, I don't want to delay it either. I'm getting to the point where I think we need to conclude everything, so... But I do reserve the right to, you know, discuss with everybody and make that decision. So is there a motion to continue the hearing to July the fifth, seven PM? Motion made?
Motion to continue.
Second? All in favor? All right. We'll see everybody else July the fifth, seven PM. Thank you for coming. Appreciate your cooperation and participation. Good night, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, we need a motion to close the public hearing?
No, we're not.
You're trying to wake me up.
We continue it.
We continue it, we don't close it, right?
The motion was to continue the fifth.
We don't close it. Thank you, Anna. Okay?
Sorry, yep.
Okay, I'm good with that.
Oh, thank you.
You're just in time.
I've been here the whole time, believe me.
Okay, come on back.
Only an hour late. Five? Forty-five minutes.
It could be worse, and it has been. What'd you say, Matt? Oh. All righty, we're gonna continue on. And we have the next scheduled hearing for the application for the commercial solar array of 147 Williamsville Road. And Dean, I guess you're up.
Okay.
Everybody ready for this? I mean, uh...
Are you recusing yourself?
The crowd is coming and I am going to recuse myself. Everybody's ready. That's it? So as I am in conflict with this scheduled hearing, I'm gonna turn the championship over to Mr. Robinson. And you go, you're off.
Okay, I'm looking for my, doing my paper shuffle here.
You're lucky you get to watch it, huh?
We are not in a planning board meeting right now, right?
Yes, we are. We're recessed, we're in a public hearing.
We're recessed and we're in a public hearing. So I would like to, we close the Marinelli Pit public hearing.
No.
No, that's still open until the fifth.
Continue it.
That's right, we continue it.
Big difference.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm, look, tonight, I'm the new guy. Any mistakes I make are mine. Please give me all the help you can.
No, y'all have to, just call it to your attention.
I need a motion to start the continuation of the public hearing for the special permit application of the commercial solar array by Borrego down on 1...
Seventy-fourth.
147 Williamsville Road.
Motion to continue the public hearing on the solar array at 147 Williamsville Road by Borrego Solar.
Second.
And all in favor? Okay, so we've opened this continuation here. I don't know any reason why we'd do it any differently. You get to speak, the board gets to speak, our consultant gets to speak, and the general public gets to speak. And probably go forward that way, okay?
Okay.
Go ahead, give it a start.
Since you just continued a fairly lengthy hearing, I'm gonna make things brief. For our case, we asked to be on your agenda tonight, basically to give the board an update as to where we are. We're still working with Places on some technical issues, mostly to do with stormwater at this point. We've narrowed things down and we're in what should be the final revisions to go back to them for review. And hopefully, we'll have everything resolved within the next couple of weeks. This project is planned for 2018 construction. There are a number of others that are going to have to be built either by the end of this year or by early in 2018 that we're pushing this out of the way. So we haven't had time to resolve all the issues with Places yet. One concern that has been brought up in the previous discussions was the addition of the utility poles out near the proposed entrance out onto Williamsville Road. And what we're proposing in order to address that situation is instead of having the poles closely spaced out near the roadway, we're gonna increase that to the maximum spacing that's allowed by the utility, which I believe is 75 feet. So the first new pole would be 75 feet back from the driveway entrance. It's gonna allow for a lot, a lot better working with, you know, buffering those from view, from the roadway and whatnot. It's coming downhill. They're gonna be a lot less visible from the residents across the street. So we've done that right now. We can work with additional buffering, landscaping up at the entrance area or something like that. But I think the spacing of the poles is really going to reduce any visual impact of those additional poles. So that's what we've got proposed. Zach Farkas, our project developer, I think, has been talking with you about it. And we'll continue to talk and make sure that we've got that worked out before we get to the point where the board is ready to issue a decision on our case. Secondly, we have gotten the survey back from the survey company. Secondly, we have gotten the survey back from the survey company, so we have a full boundary survey that's signed and sealed by the surveyor now. We have on-the-ground topo that we're using for, for our revised designs. So that's all taken care of. We did file, because of places' recommendation, we filed an E and R form with the MIPA office of the state. We've heard back from them, and they're reporting to us that there's no state nexus. So, we're not going to be going through a lengthy MIPA review, but we did, we did distribute it to all the required agencies. And heard back from the MIPA office that there's not a concern there. We are in the process of revising our grading plan and our stormwater calculations, as I said, to address some technical issues that, that places has raised. I think we're close to resolving those. I think this is gonna be the last round right now. They have some concerns about how we're affecting stormwater runoff onto some of the adjacent properties. And also down the hill towards the, the Commonwealth's property and towards the river. So, we're working on those, adding some details of grading of the entrance road itself. So there'll be additions to our plan set for that. They're providing additional details for places. We're also going to be filing what's called a self-verification form for the small isolated wetland that's actually located within our array field. It's not jurisdictional under the, the Conservation Commission's regulations. So they're not, they don't take jurisdiction of small isolated wetlands like that. We'll be submitting that to the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers for the approval to cut the trees in there. Well, we're not currently proposing any dredge or fill of material in there or placement of racks. We moved our equipment area out of there so that there, there's no placement of fill in that area any longer. As Dean mentioned earlier, the Conservation Commission is going to walk the site on Friday afternoon. And it sounds like some of the, the planning board members are gonna tag along for that. As I said, I'm hoping that I'll be present myself, but if I'm not there, there's a number of people, our project manager, our site supervisor, Zach, the project developer, they're all familiar with the project. So, there will be Borrego representatives there to answer any questions that, that the board and the commission might have while we're walking the site.
What date is that Friday?
That's this Friday, yes, this Friday the ninth at two PM. And we did provide a, a map, the existing driveway that goes back to the residence, the way to come in there and park. And there's a small parking area that's off away from the residence that's, so that they're not, you know, they're not affected by, by people coming and going. And we've notified them that, that we are gonna have people on site that day, so the owners are aware that, that we'll be there. Other than that, I just wanted to bring the board up to date as to where, where we stand. I think with an opportunity to provide the, the additional detail that places has asked for, I think we're very close to coming to a conclusion, unless Bill has a different opinion of that. So, I'm hoping that we'll end up in the same situation as, as the, the last hearing did. And that hopefully that we can begin drafting a decision so that we can close, close out the remaining issues and hopefully move towards a decision at the next hearing.
Bill, have you been in contact with DCR, the Water Division, about their recommendations or...
They, they were noticed on this application as well as our notice of intent application with the Conservation Commission, so...
So they've been notified, are they...
They have been notified of those. They also were included on the distribution list for our MIPA application. So, they're, they're well aware of what we've got proposed here. I personally haven't heard anything back from them. So, I, I'm assuming that they, they didn't see a, a reason for concern with what they saw. They've, they've seen our full plan site, plan set, and the notice of intent information as well.
Okay, so they've, they've seen it on...
They got a notice by certified return and receipt mail.
I have one other question not related to, to that. It's just, I got something in the mail today for people, companies similar to yours. About, 'cause we have a pretty good sized property, and they're asking us to do a solar system, but that's not the issue. On one of the notes on here, it says, um, the three-phase circuits, I, as I mentioned, folks, when the three-phase circuits are full, oh, we read sixteen hundred megawatts under the smart program, we won't be able to add any additional solar generation power onto them. And we're getting close to that situation now. I mean, obviously, it's a sales technique.
Yes.
But, okay, but I just wanna be assured that people on, in Hubbardston will be able to put solar systems on their houses if, if they so desire. That we're not gonna have all these commercial properties eating up all the available solar potential for people in town. And I'd like to be able to, maybe, can we get something from National Grid to kinda verify that?
Sure, we can, we can certainly work on that. I think Zach addressed that to, to a certain point last night.
He did, and I, I felt comfortable with it, but, I mean, I, I mean, I'm taking for what it is.
Yeah, and that, that would be based on the, the exact location that you're talking about as well. If it connects to a different substation, the, the issues are, are pretty complex. But with the interconnection application that we've made to the utility, they do a detailed study that will determine all of that. And Zach is a lot closer to that side of things. And was aware that, that there wouldn't be any restriction on the residential type uses in, in this particular area.
But in social media and, and, and my own thinking, and I, I mean, I really like solar, and I have it on my prop, my house and stuff. And I don't want commercial installers to eat up all the ability for people if they want to install this on their house. So we'd like to get something, I'd like to see something official from National Grid that they're not gonna, that's not gonna happen for wherever your substation section is.
Am I correct, the last time you spoke, if I could say it this way, your electrons were flowing towards the Barry Substation?
I believe that's what Zach had said, yes. He's, he's the one that knows all those details, but I, that's correct.
Yeah, power goes down Williamsville Road towards Barry.
Yeah, south, it might have been the South Barry Substation that he was referring to.
If you could make that part of your final submission.
Sure, I'm, I'm sure he'll be able to be with me for the next hearing so that we can close out all of, all of your concerns in that regard. As well as addressing the community energy project.
That's of great interest.
The, the Gardner Road projects are community energy, so he can speak to that as far as the other projects go. And maybe shed more light on exactly where the power that's produced by this facility will be used.
Do you anticipate that the state's gonna increase that number, or the grid's gonna be upgraded?
Well, it's...
What have you heard from the major power companies, like Manstar and National Grid?
That, that will be partly determined by the detailed study that National Grid is undertaking. So, when, when that's produced, it will address some of those factors. It's, it's mostly a, a factor of what kind of upgrades are made to the substation and to the, the transmission lines between. So, I, I'm not familiar enough to, to speak to it in more detail than that, but Zach will be.
Okay.
Bill, do you have any questions or comments about this at this time?
I don't know if you and I have talked about it, but I was approached by some other people. And I think that the board's gonna want a staging area remote from the roadway, so that we don't have a repeat of what happened on Gardner Road.
If it's, if it's not explicitly shown on the plan as it is now, we do have a plan for that. I can show you basically.
What happened across the street from me?
And what happened across the street from you, where the staging occurred in the street and on the street, next to the street.
In the buffer.
This, this is a bit old at this point. The, the array itself has been more squared off, so it's more of a rectangular shape. But there is additional clearing here along the east side of the system. So, we're planning on staging in the area that's where the trees are gonna be cut, that are outside the fence. So, all the materials would be staged. That's where the parking would be for, for workers that are coming to the site as well.
That was what I received as comments.
Entrance, entrance road is where?
The entrance road is here, which is directly across from this gentleman's residence, I believe. The property owners didn't want the joint use of the existing driveway, so it's, it's a little further to the west, on the opposite side of the parcel.
And to the left is downhill, where downhill comes as the, the handle.
This is...
That's the ridge.
It's kind of flat right there, and it's at the ridge. Yeah, I believe it comes up from both sides, and that's, that's near the high point of the road right there, isn't it? Pretty close to it.
Property.
Dead nuts across from my driveway.
But you're in the process now of revising that, correct, the entranceway?
We, we're not revising the location, but we're pushing the proposed utility poles further back.
So you're narrowing it from what it is now, 'cause it was like double width to accommodate the telephone poles out of the road.
It was, yeah, the, the geometry of it was redesigned from the original plan.
And you can't slide it a little more away from being directly across from it, probably coming a little more than angle?
Well, then, then we start to get into problems with conflicts between the, the driveways being too close to each other.
What's the distance to him right now?
It is, well, the drive, the existing driveway is just at the east boundary. If you take this point in, that's two, that's the two-hundred-foot frontage of the parcel. So, it's, it's about a hundred and twenty-five to a hundred and fifty feet between the driveways.
Which is almost the distance between two telephone poles.
About that, yes, about that.
But we narrow it down at the beginning, again, to minimize the impact for people across the street. You could kinda angle a little bit more.
We did, we realigned it so that it wasn't at such a strict angle.
Keep him a little more, more buffer so he's in his driveway, he's not looking directly down onto that project. He's looking at more of a green space, and the entrance can be a little further down.
Okay, well, I'll, I'll talk to where it's on.
Would your driveway and that entrance line up? Offset?
Just like a gun barrel.
Yeah, just like the one me and my, my, my nice neighbor.
Yeah, I won't, I mean, when, when it's my turn to say something, then I'll have one.
Any further questions?
I just have one other question, one of the comments I've had from public residents, uh, from residents. They, they're saying this is the second largest solar system in the state of Massachusetts. It's a big system.
Not to my knowledge. Th- this is proposed at seven megawatts or five megawatts AC, seven megawatts DC, five megawatts AC. Which is basically what the new smart incentive program, that, that's what it's designed around.
So this is bigger than anything else that's ever been?
It's not bigger than a lot of systems, but it's, it's not, most of, most of our systems are a bit smaller than that. But all the new ones that are coming down the pike under the new program have tended to be in this size range.
So, this is unusual, big?
Previously, I think they had a two-megawatt AC maximum size. So, this project could still be permitted under that, but it would have been separated into several smaller systems. So, the overall size of the project is not unusual, but being that it's a seven-megawatt system that's all one system is something new under the new program.
Okay, the total acreage is what I'm talking about?
The total acreage and the total system size is not out of the ordinary.
I think the biggest one in the state is fifteen, how many? Thirteen.
Thirteen megawatts.
I don't know AC, DC.
No, I just talked about acreage, you know, it's just one of the concerns.
No, thirteen megawatts.
I know, but a lot of the, some of the concerns is just a big, big, big area, but it's not, it's not, from what you're saying, it's not...
It's not out of the ordinary in that, in that regard. It just would have had to be separated out into smaller systems. But they are still, they were still consolidated, so they were just separate because of that technicality.
That would be, an example of that would be the, the sixty-eight North Solar Panel Field. It's really two properties, two.
Yes.
Okay, any, any more board questions? Any comments, Bill? Your turn, Mr. Purnier?
First of all, I wanna make it clear that I'm not against solar in any way, or this solar project. It's gonna be out back. You're not gonna see it. Basically, this is about the entranceway, okay? Certainly nothing against Borrego or Next Ant or any of them, but they look like crap when you have to stare at them, okay? The people putting them in aren't the ones that have to live next, okay? So, if you're going to, you know, maybe move the driveway over a little bit or narrow it down or put the poles back, that would be great. Anything to mitigate it, from my view. We've lived in town for a long time. You can understand. I spoke to Cindy and Dennis about it, the property owners, and for them, using their driveway was a, it was a non-starter.
That's what I was told.
So, it seems to me that the people that are going to reap the benefit should bear the burden, okay? If it's gonna go in there, that's one thing, but it should be mitigated for the people who have to look at it. Or, because if you look at the one on Route sixty-eight, that thing when they were working on it, traffic tie-ups, the poles are there on the side of the road, the width of the clearing. It's not very aesthetically pleasing. With this going out back, we're simply talking about a driveway.
Just the driveway, yes.
So, if we can, if, if anything can be done to mitigate it, so that there would be a buffer in between my house and that. My house is a seventeen-seventy-five colonial. I really, if it was a brand-new cookie cutter house dropped in, new and new, it, it wouldn't affect it so much. But if you look at the poles or across from your property, I'm sorry, it's just not that good-looking, okay? And you'll go home and Zach will go home. You don't have to look at it. I'm gonna have to look at it. I'm getting close to retirement age. Right now, I'm not home, so I won't see it much, but I don't wanna look at it every day.
Sure, that's understood.
So, if something can be done to mitigate it, what I'm saying is, I'm not in any way against this project. I think it's, they're great things. I think it's an answer to a, to a problem. But if we could do something to mitigate it, you know, it sounds like you're trying to do something now. Anything you can do, I would certainly appreciate.
Sure, we'll, we'll have more conversations with you. Can I ask a couple of questions about what, what the concerns actually are? Is the driveway itself a concern?
It's, okay, mostly not the driveway. I mean, it depends on how wide the mouth is gonna be at the front. I know in order to turn track the trailers, that's which, which you're gonna be doing, you're gonna have to make the mouth a little wider in the front to get the trailers in.
Well, we, we won't be bringing that much heavy vehicle traffic in. We do have to provide for emergency services. So fire trucks would still have to have access down to the area.
So they're, I mean, a driveway is a driveway. If, and they're going to excavate that area, you're gonna have to gravel the whole thing. If the poles are set back, and the other concern was, I guess, a gate. Mostly, but I, from what I understand now, that gate is going to be set back quite a ways. Because the first two poles, if I understand it correctly, are going to belong to National Grid, yes?
That's correct.
So they have to have access to those first two poles. Now, are you saying, did I hear you correctly, in saying that the first pole of this solar project would be seventy-five feet in off the road? Or we're hoping for that, or is what you're thinking?
It's the maximum spacing, which I'm recalling is seventy-five feet. I'm not absolutely certain of that, but I'll, I'll make sure that we provide you with exactly what...
Is that the National Grid's pole?
It's National Grid's specification. It's the maximum spacing that they will allow for their utility-owned poles. And it would be from, from the roadway, the existing pole that's across from your driveway is our interconnection point.
So you're gonna hook to that.
So the first, the first new pole would be at that maximum. So the first, the first new pole would be at that maximum distance back from.
From that pole.
From that pole.
The pole that's in front of my driveway, you'd, hopefully, you could put it seventy-five feet back and then the next pole, if it's back that far.
Yes, those first two poles will have that maximum spacing and then once we get, uh, they won't even be visible by, by the time you get to the next poles, so.
And the gate, is it like a security gate or just a lock gate to keep?
That, that gate is what most people would refer to as a cattle gate.
The rip raft? Yep.
It's a, it's just a swing gate that, that comes out across the road, so it's just, it's just there to try and prevent people from going further back towards the system.
Yeah, yeah. But it would be back quite a ways.
The real, it would be back beyond those utility poles, yeah.
Right.
So there's one swing gate there, to prevent, just to prevent traffic from coming down the driveway, but the real security gate is on the fenced portion of the array.
Is that the, is that the fence?
Yes, it's at the fence and it's locked at all times.
So if you look at my poles across the street from my house.
Yep.
That's, you'll see the one right, right at the road.
Yep.
It's about seventy-five feet, I think it is, and that's National Grid's number, from that pole to the next pole going into it.
Yep.
So it's, seventy-five feet's not too long, but it's, that's what it, with.
Yep, now, the fence, is the fence gonna be running along that driveway coming out?
No, there's no, there's no fence.
It just goes around the facility, around the array.
It's just, yeah, it's just back here around, around the arrays themselves, there's no fence up closer to the roadway.
Yep. Yep, just out of curiosity, is that for keeping people out or animals out, or just because you have to, or?
Well, it is required under the electrical code, um, it's mostly a safety feature.
Yep.
Because there is electrical equipment inside, inside the facility, so you don't want access by the public, by kids, uh, that would come in and, and be in the vicinity of that high voltage equipment. Well, or the, I don't even know if it's high voltage, I think it's medium voltage, but in, and having access to the electrical equipment. It's all in closed containers, but still, um, under the electrical code, you wanna prevent people from, from coming in and accessing those, those facilities.
Well, is it possible if the owners agreed to just use the first hundred feet of their driveway and then swerve off, I mean, is that a possibility?
Um, it could be a possibility, but a- as he's mentioning, it, as I was told, it was pretty much a deal killer with them previously. So, uh, Zach will have to address that with them if, if the board is, is wanting us to go in that kind of direction.
But, I mean, I'm, from a technical point of view, it's not insur- insurmountable.
From a technical aspect, it can be done, yes, yes, we could just come in the first and then just bend over to where the driveway is now, so.
What's, what's the showstopper to split the distance?
Well.
You said it's about a hundred and seventy-five feet?
It's two hundred feet total across the frontage of the property, it's probably closer to a hundred and fifty feet separation between the driveways as we have.
And I've got, to that, on that frontage, if you measure that frontage on the stone wall in front of my property. To get their two hundred feet of frontage, they basically took thirty feet right along the edge of the road on Kathy Hansgate's property and made like a little pie shape, that's how you got two hundred feet. Because if you measure from the stone wall to their driveway, you're only at about a hundred and seventy feet.
Yeah, there is a, there is a little triangular extension there.
It's a little wedge that they made to make that lot conform.
It's on there, isn't it?
And I'm not sure.
Yeah, it is, it is showing.
Right, you can see it, okay, but what I'm asking is.
Yeah, this little point here is what you're referring to.
See what I'm saying here?
Yeah.
Now, I don't see why, if you, this is just thinking, you couldn't come through here, okay, and leave that buffer of trees. There'd be no sightline, you're not going up their driveway, and basically, it, all you'd be doing is cutting across, do you see what I'm saying? There's no wetland issues or anything there.
Are you suggesting that's the path of the poles, or the path of the poles and the access road?
I think that should be the path of the access road and the path of the poles.
Just wanted to understand.
The, they are going to get the benefit of this. It's not, I don't think, unreasonable to ask that they should have to, I mean, I can understand them not wanting, maybe go down their driveway, but they could make it so that it would be less intrusive on us. So, that's, that's just a thought.
I wrote down a bunch of notes, but I'm doing.
Well.
It's a fifty-foot buffer between property lines, right?
Well, we'll take that into consideration, I'll, I'll talk to Zach about that and see what, what.
Fifty-foot, thirty-foot line?
Um, obviously, once this, once the facility is in operation.
Yeah.
We only come by three to four times a year to roll the grass, unless there's some kind of an operational issue that they need to come by, but very, very infrequent visits to the site.
Following that point, Parkman, there's any reason that they can't build a construction-only road, which would have the poles and would gain access? And then we could re-vegetate that or discontinue it for construction purposes, because you only use it three to four times a year, it's not much of a burden on the residents for the maintenance access to come up their driveway.
And the maintenance is completely accomplished without reactivating the access road, the construction access road?
Yeah.
Cause I think I wrote all in.
Yeah, I think what he's suggesting is that we build the driveway as we had it planned here, but then, once the facility is ready to go into operation, that we close off the portion of the driveway that's out, out.
And you, you know, you gain access to the National Grid poles interior to the site from the existing residences, as opposed to off of Williamsville, we could vegetate that.
Yeah, you still have us in there.
So that everybody wins, that they can build it and the neighbor is barely impacted, because once this goes into maintenance mode.
They're hardly there.
That, yeah.
Yeah, we're not there for frequent, my three poles.
And in that suggestion, I think I understood it, but where are the poles?
They'd probably be along the construction access, but we would block it off and you would gain access to those poles interior to the site using the neighbor's driveway. You'd have a loopback, you'd have a T, you go to the right to Williamsville, then the rest of the power, it's like, like, no different than a utility line easement.
Sure, we'll, we'll have to address that with the utility as well, but I can put that in motion and see what we can come up with.
I mean, in any case, we could, it could be a, a simple gravel drive, vegetate it, even if you take the construction road and then bring it back down to a country lane. You know, looks like a woodlot lane.
Right, right, I know about that, do we, do you know what the width of clearing would be on that road?
Yeah.
Well.
Cause the whole road is, you're looking at fourteen feet, is that?
Fourteen-foot drive is what we have proposed.
Right. But do you know what the width of clearing on the road would be?
The, we need to clear an additional ten feet beyond the poles themselves for clearance for the utility.
So that would be on one side, if the, if the driveway, cause it would be on one side of the driveway.
That would be on one side. Yes.
So you'd have fourteen feet on one side, so you saw it there, you'd have to clear an additional ten feet.
Yes.
Off that, are the poles going to go, if you're looking down the drive, are they gonna be on the right or left?
Yeah, so. The poles, if you're looking down the driveway, the poles would be on the right-hand side, they're on the west.
Towards the neighbor's stone wall.
They're on the west side of the, of the driveway, because that's where that existing pole is, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
It's the existing pole.
Yep.
Um, yeah, I, I think with the other work that goes along with what's in there, you probably would have a cleared area that's twenty-five feet, probably, from, from side to side.
Yep.
To construct that and place the poles.
I would guess the model for that would be Route sixty-eight, that's the width of the.
Well, that's a, that's a really deep.
No, that's a double, that's a double, but a single one, a single, am I wrong?
That's pretty vaporized on that.
Yeah, there are, there are two intersections there, yes.
I know, but if you looked at just one of them, if you could just look at one of them, that's one of them.
Yes, yes, and we, we didn't have that particular constraint there, so we weren't being concerned about minimizing it.
I understand.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
But knowing that there's a concern, we would in this case, so.
This, we could re-vegetate, we could bring, we could narrow it down once construction's over.
Is re-vegetation re-treating or re-bushing?
Bush, that's your, it's bush?
Well, no, it isn't, because if, if they require like a bucket truck access, um, you can't put a tree in there.
Right. Oh, high bush, blue.
Right, and they, they wouldn't allow tall, growing vegetation under the overhead line, so it would have, it would have to be clear.
When you move towards that piece of pie, I'm sorry.
Yeah, there you go.
When you move towards that little piece of pie on the plot plan, is there another pole you could connect, isn't it all sort of two thousand?
Um, I'll ha- I'll have to address that with our interconnection people. Um, from what I understood, there need to be some upgrades to the lines coming down.
From that side?
Coming down Williamsville Road, but I'm not absolutely certain of that, and I don't know.
Your NPS study doesn't show that, shows all as thirteen thousand eight hundred.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know off the top of my head where the next pole is located. Um, it's probably right in the vicinity of that other driveway, but I don't recall from being out there. Um, one o- one other question from your standpoint.
Sure.
Um, as far as any visual impacts that we're talking about, is it from, from your residence or from some outdoor space around your residence? What, where exactly is your concern and, and what would cause the problem for you?
Most of my concern was the driveway from your map appears to be basically going right across from my driveway.
I, I think that's about it, yes.
And what I was concerned about, okay, was the width, the width of clearing, and I assumed that those poles were gonna be right out tight to the street, okay? And it, it, no, the, the, the term rural character of this town is bandied around quite a bit, so I guess it's my turn to use it. But I'd like it, you know, I don't really wanna, if the poles were set back, I really don't think that there would be a problem, do you know what I mean? If the, if the width of clearing was going to be kept to a minimum, that would be good, okay?
Okay.
And as far as the gate goes, if that's gonna be back, you know, quite a ways in the fall, hey, the leaves come off, you might be looking at it, but it's not, it's not a big deal.
Yeah, it's, it's probably gonna be something on the order of a hundred and fifty to a hundred and seventy-five feet back from the roadway.
The gate?
The gate, the, the cattle gate, the first gate.
Cattle gate.
Yeah, I mean, if, you know, and you said it was basically just a regular gate, it's not a, you know, with razor wire on the top.
Yeah, it's not a barbed wire fence or anything like that, it's a, it's a, you know, breast, breast-high.
Yeah.
Galvanized steel.
Yeah, galvanized steel, that's, it's just a swing gate.
So what's the plan, um, will you go off and revise this?
Yes, we're, we're working on some revisions for that, we can also incorporate, you know, some discussions with the neighbors and incorporate some, some revisions there.
Will you? Am I correct that the first two poles that are owned by N- and, uh, National Grid don't have all your interconnect gear on them? They're just thirteen thousand six hundred volts, right?
Well, they will have some utility-owned equipment on them, they, they will have some mounted equipment, but, um, I would have to get the details of exactly what's, what's mounted there.
What I was hoping was the first two poles wouldn't require the extra ten feet, and that wouldn't open up until you were interior, but I guess I'm wrong.
Well. No, they, they need to have access all around the pole for the, for their maintenance operations.
Okay. Okay. So you have a homework assignment?
Yes.
Um, is there anything we have to do?
I don't think so, we, we appreciate your consideration so far, I think the board's been very.
Bill, you got any? What I'm trying to do is wrap it up.
The walkthrough, that's, 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 that's the only thing that he has for us, the walkthrough.
Right.
The walk. Yeah, that's Friday.
Yes.
The site walk, is that conservation commission?
Yes. The conservation commission was the original request, but some of the board members are going.
Is that through the public, or is that just for the conservation commission?
It was at their request, I, I'll have to check with, with the owners.
Vince, could you help us on that?
Yes, it's a, it's an open meeting, conservation requested it, planning board has posted it also, so we can join in and the public is welcome.
Okay.
It's an open meeting, you're welcome, two o'clock Friday.
I'm gonna be up in New Hampshire, what I'm sorry.
I think it was, it was one o'clock, one o'clock.
No, I think it's two.
One o'clock?
What's that posted for?
I had posted for what?
Don't talk among yourselves for now.
That's the email that I thought.
How are we doing for the ability to wrap this up?
So the question is, will you be ready for the July fifth meeting for our presentation?
Yes.
And you're sure?
All of, yes, all of the things that were preventing me from doing that are out of the way now, so I, I can devote my full-time attention to it.
So I'd like to make a motion.
Before you do that, could I ask you to bring a bigger picture of the driveway?
Yes, I, I will do that, I will, I'll bring some, some new exhibits for you that are up to date with, with all of the revisions.
Do you wanna see what's going on? Some dimensions and. And maybe show his driveway across the street so that we know.
I can do that, I can overlay it on it and aerial photograph, I can, I can do lots of things that'll, that'll help illuminate the situation.
So, that's perfect. So, so we'll see it by visiting the site, but the general public won't, so.
Yes, so I'll, I'll make sure that I have exhibits specific.
Just as a, as a point of information, um, as you said, Dean, this project is quite a ways away, and there seems to be quite a few more details that need to be moved on. Is it more prudent to sp- uh, to, uh, stretch the, the next hearing date up to August instead of July?
Uh, I think that's gonna give Zach a lot of grief, um, only partly because the new incentive programs are not fully defined yet. And so the further through this process that we get, the better case we have to make that we're grandfathered in under some of those provisions. He's afraid that they're gonna make some kind of change that has a, a major impact on the, on the project.
So.
So pushing, pushing out the, the approval dates of the local planning board could really have a significant impact.
What I, what I think I heard was Vince suggested that to accommodate your need, we have no corresponding need, we can do it in July.
Correct, I, I'm thinking, I'm thinking in terms of, of mutual scheduling, of course, but it seems like you guys need to catch up with a lot of stuff.
It's, well, it has, it's been dragging out much more than I would like to have seen it at this point, but like I said, I had, I had five other projects that, that were on a much shorter string than this. So I had to set it aside to make sure that those stayed on schedule, so they're out of the way and this will be a priority, so, um.
So continue to draw.
Based on where we are in our discussions with places, I, I don't see that as a problem.
Oh, excellent, on August.
Well, okay, so my, my setup question is simply because if this is the case, I just want to inform you that the, the plane board typically takes the month of August off, so.
Okay, okay.
We take the line up, too.
That, that gives me additional motivation to get things resolved with Bill.
So back to my motion.
It's coming up to nine thirty.
I wanna make a motion, nobody interrupt me, that we continue this hearing to July fifth at eight o'clock.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Thirty.
I, uh, need a motion to, um.
Reconvene.
Reconvene, well, actually stop the public hearing, or?
Reconvene, regularly scheduled.
Reconvene the regularly scheduled planning board meeting.
We'll all say yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Come on back, Vince.
Thank you very much for your time.
Oh, thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
It's not too bad. I got out at ten thirty last night, so.
Drink this stuff, that's the color you, uh.
That's the color you're drinking?
Yeah, that's not, no, this is. About the same color. Little much of like action.
Yeah, if I had known, I might have, might have waited a little longer to come up.
Looks like the same thing. What is it?
Listening to the other case was interesting.
Uh, it's there, any true, they, they call it a fizzy stick.
A who?
A fizzy stick.
Fizzy stick?
Yeah, so in other words, you use this to detox yourself?
Yeah.
But the fizzy stick is kinda like a energy drink, nowhere near like a Red Bull, but no caffeine, but it's something in there that.
Really? And it's called a fizzy stick, where do you buy it?
You, uh, you can get it through a distributor, like my daughter, she's a distributor, my other daughter's a distributor, but she's in, she's in, uh, Connecticut.
Scott, when Mark made the motion to continue the public hearing to July fifth, did you second that?
I did, he did.
It was you, sorry.
So Mark's motion was his.
Good night, everyone.
Take care, Dean.
I thirded it.
Thank you.
I thirded it.
Oh, okay, I'll put that down.
Yeah, Scott thirded the emotion, now he had emotion, not motion.
Kenny, need money? Janet, you want it?
I'm all set, thank you, Vinny.
It's not the white liquid I wanna drink right now. It's seltzer, come on.
Five point seven percent seltzer?
They make that now, don't they?
Actually, they're pretty good. Uh, there's, there's one called Something Clam, really, really good.
Oh, yeah?
Less cal- less calories, you know what I mean?
Well, it's good to be back. Thank you very much, folks. Well done, Tom.
Well, we'll see.
Let's move on. Thanks for waiting, folks, appreciate your patience. We, uh, are going to help accommodate you next hearing, so come on up. You got enough chairs, no? Would you mind introducing yourselves and then we'll introduce ourselves and we'll all be.
Andy Smith.
Andy Smith.
Jacob Federico.
Hi. Tom Bracco, Vin Ritchie, Ken Daly, Tom Robinson, Scott LeBlanc, Janet Bazuskis, and our consultant is Bill Murray back there.
Why is that with that clarification? Clarification on the original permit we had? L.
All right. On the original permit, in regards to like the original escrow account, where we've got the ten thousand in escrow from the town.
Okay.
The ten thousand was supposedly held for six months after the close of the permit, so we could.
Pretty much wrap it up.
For.
So you wanna donate it to the town? No, the ten thousand, the ten thousand was at the completion of the reclamation. Okay, let's, let's, let's back up a minute here, folks. What we have here for the record is the earth removal permit, Catysto Inc., twenty-six Worcester Road, Hubbardston, Mass. Permit to expire December thirty first, two thousand four. And the question is to clarify section L of this permit. And I'll read that section for everybody. Section L says the permittee shall be required to place a ten thousand dollar in an escrow account in the name of the town of Hubbardston prior to commencement of operations. Such funds will become the property of the town in the event of permit revocation, the non-compliance of permit regulations. The funds must be held in escrow at least six months past expiration of the permit or until the town engineer has determined that the land has been stabilized. Okay, now, we'll do what we can to clarify that, but I have to clarify this for you folks. That in two thousand and four, in that, um, the board of selectmen was granting these permits. We had nothing to do with this permit and we're seeing it for the first time. Okay, so we'll do whatever we can to help you on that. We don't have much reference to this particular permit. Tom has done a great deal of research and I think the subject of ten thousand dollars has come up in the past. I'm not sure we have your answers yet. But your real question is that you did give the two, the ten thousand dollars to the town.
Yep.
And I hope they gave you a receipt for it. Yeah, they, 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 the town admits that they have it. The question that your other, the other brother had, uh, was, were, they stopped sending the interest payments to the family.
Right.
And now they have.
That's resolved.
Oh, that is resolved, okay, so that's all been resolved. Okay, so now, we, we still hold your ten thousand dollars and you would like us to do what? Well, let me, let me just look at this. Let me. Let me just, it's, it's easier, easier to clarify. The funds have held in escrow at least six months past expiration of the pit or until the town engineer has determined that the land has been stabilized. That's correct. Do you have a, a? Well, what I'm asking them, Thomas, what, what their expectations is now, so we know what we're gonna be trying to help them with.
Well, what, what they're looking for is some money to close it. For the oper- for the, to hire someone to, to do the sloping and the seeding.
So you need the ten thousand dollars that's in escrow to do the closing?
It, that's what we're looking for.
Is that what, that's what?
That's what we're looking for.
We have no money. Is, the company is dissolved.
We understand that concept, we, uh, we're helped with.
The company is dissolved, you know, I mean, I'm paying the taxes out of my pocket until we sell the property or do something.
Well, this is what we're trying to just, you know, just figure out exactly what we need to do and what we can do to help you. Cause, you know, as we've said so many times, we have an objective which, you know, we will work with the landowners to achieve. Okay, so, um. Well, do you have an, a, 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 do you have a, um, engineer? Have you had an engineer determine that the land has been stabilized? That's, that was one of the conditions of the permit. So before they give you, what this is saying is, and I'm not a lawyer, so we'd have to ask a attorney to clarify it, but I'm pretty sure what it says. That the town will give you the ten thousand dollars back after we get a certified engineer that's saying it's been stabilized. Bill, you're an engineer company, your company's an engineering company. Is that, am I reading that correctly from your experience?
Yes.
Now. But they need the ten thousand. Wait, 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 time, time, folks, let's, let's do this a little bit more on it. Because with, with this situation, there are a couple of things that we need to make sure we all understand, okay? We did not issue this permit, okay? We, we have had no control over this. And three, it is expired. The permit has expired. So now, I'm thinking that because you have to comply with the most recent bylaw of twenty-ten, that we're, we're going to have jurisdiction over this potential reclamation project. Okay? And the word stabilized is used, not reclaimed. Correct, okay? So, how long has it been since you stopped operations?
It's over ten years ago.
Over ten years ago, okay. So let me, let me just make this as a, an assumption that we're gonna have to discuss and we'll, we'll make some determinations. Is that, in this condition, with the term stabilized, after ten years of laying, if the word is fallow, there has got to be some type of undergrowth that has developed along the land. And the term then for stabilized could be applied to the fact that there is no erosion taking place or anything else. Doesn't say reclaimed. Okay, but it does say stabilized. Um, could we then, and I'll ask this question for, you know, where we go from here. Could we then say, subject to your reclamation plan, we could potentially, and I'm only using that word because I, you know, we're not on legal ground here. We still have to look into it. We could potentially get a determination from places that there is stabilized land and that would settle the issue of the ten thousand dollars. I would only do that if we had an agreement that your reclamation plan would then be submitted at the same time, subject to, you know, the return of your money, that, that kind of a situation. And, and, and prices and contracts in place. Oh, sure, yeah, you know what, do you understand what I mean? Because there's two separate issues here.
Right.
You know, and, does that make sense, Bill? I mean, I'm not gonna ask you for that determination and you're su- but, but what I'm saying to you is that that would be a way to determine what we have under these conditions and then continue on with the objectives that we all want. If I understand what you're saying, you're saying if, if they came to us with a reclamation plan and the contracts in hand, everything's ready to go, we don't control this money anyways, nor, we would have to request from the select board to say, we have everything in place, this is gonna happen. We know it's gonna happen. It's gonna cost you ten thousand dollars. We'll give you the money to pay it or we'll pay the bills ourselves, whatever, whatever. And we'll get it done like that. Is that what you've, is that? I think that's what.
Well, it's another way of doing it, yeah, you're right.
So, yeah, you can make payments against progress.
I mean, or, like, like I said, you know, we, we close out one and begin the other, which is, I think, the preferred way. Because this is, this is obsolete right now. But I think, I think that's what you, your, your, your end goal is to use this, one of his money here to reclaim the property. Right.
Yeah, and is it to go?
Anyway, what we wanna do is reclaim the property too, so that's, we all have the same goal.
We don't have the money to.
Yeah.
Who wants to spend, for someone to come in and.
Have you got any estimates yet?
Uh, we got two estimates that are ready to come in. And I haven't seen them, but I was up there Tuesday, um, and I was in there with different, uh, two, two, uh, two different companies.
Can you do a job for the ten grain, you think?
Hoping.
Bill?
Is there any value to the soil that's left there? Cause this board can, I'm just voting on an idea. This board can permit more soil removal with the end goal of gaining reclamation, which means you can get additional cash flow. So if you talk to these guys that are your contractors and say, how many cubic yards of this would it take for you to do this? And that, that achieves everybody's goal at the same time.
It's heavy, heavy clay materials, it's, it's.
Yeah, it's perfect for a land in a cap.
Pentonite, uh.
Well, they're phasing out of that, the clay and going totally almost rubble.
Polly.
Cause it's.
Improv.
So we would have to run that, I think, by the select board as well. We have to, cause they control the money, obviously. And they wrote the original permit. Sure, um, but what, the way around it, Tom, I'm not, you know, this is part of the problem is, once we put all our heads together, we'll come up with some kind of solution. But the, the original problem is that getting that money back under this permit, which is expired and with any luck, we can use the semantics of the word stabilized, then with the conditions that we're talking about for the reclamation, one will go to the other. Which, well, I think I heard you say you want.
It makes sense to have something from us that lets the select board know that we approved this because I'm pretty sure, gut feeling is, they're gonna come back to us and say, decision's in your hand, even though it was written by the select board many years ago.
It's just, trying to accommodate.
Right.
The people, so I mean, I, I. Well, it's just the money that's in their hands.
Right.
Permit has expired, this is a debt issue. But their money, you know, has got a condition to come back. And I'm willing to work with the conditions to get you, your money back if you're willing to get the plan underway. That's what I'm saying. So if you, if, we could go to the select board meeting, obviously with you, and say we, we can't, and we haven't, we haven't reached this decision. This is a hypothetical. We have a, I have a, we're gonna come to a decision that you're gonna, you've got your prices for your reclamation. This is what it's gonna cost. The planning board is happy with that and you have a reclamation plan, obviously. You have a plan and you have a price. It's gonna be, let's just say, ten thousand dollars exactly. Say the planning board is happy with, with that, we'll, we'll accept. And we see the contracts and everything is gonna happen, we recommend that they return the ten thousand dollars to you to get this work, the payment, to get the.
Contract.
To get the contract signed and done. Cause you, you're. That, that's the hypothetical. That's a hypothetical. If that makes sense, then.
Because we can't go, I haven't do anything.
Yeah, I understand.
Right now. I mean, I mean, July would be the perfect month, August.
I think your brother said, oh, July and Au- well, not, not this June anyway. Last, last July would have been perfect, yeah.
Yeah, exactly, it's a nice dry stretch, you know, you need a couple of weeks to hear.
So if you could come up with those prices, those prices in, in the plan.
All right. Um. Now, the plan is, I have to have an engineered plan or.
I don't know that, what answer, do you? I, I would have to reread the bylaw right now. It's, you know, off the top of my head, I don't have a.
Would we have to get a permit just to move, to move the overburden and everything, to get everything to the three to one slope that it needs to be done?
That's part of the reclamation plan, so you'd have to get. Yep. Bill, again, so we keep beating you up about this. Is that, is, is, does the typically reclamation plan have to be a engineered drawing?
Regulations say it does, but you're allowed to waive any part of the regulation that you deem fit.
Can we use our original plan?
Have you got engineering drawings from the old days?
Yeah.
Boundary lines, some kind of original, oh, all right.
You have these.
Well, I would bring them in and show them to us and get Bill at the table and we'll. I, I don't think it's very wise.
There's not much, I mean, granted, there's three to one slope and seeded and moved.
I, I think, I don't think it's very wise to spend nine of the ten thousand dollars on paper generation.
Right, exactly, that's what we're trying to say.
Unless it's, unless it's short pa- paper fiber.
All those are, choose up a lot of money quick.
Yeah, but we, we, if we really want a reclamation, uh, we wanna invest the funds available in reclamation. Um, and I think it's important to judge it by the accomplished results, not by the paper. We go out and look and a surveyor might have to go in there and say, yeah, it's got three to one slope or whatever. But I, I would rather judge the success or failure of a plan on, on what you accomplish, you know, move dirt.
Right.
Rather than move the pencils.
Right.
So, I, I don't know, I'm expressing something that I don't know quite what it is, cause I haven't seen your twenty-year-old plans. But, um, you know, if they, if they make sense and there's, there's proper boundaries and things haven't, property lines haven't changed.
That's last summer.
Yeah, I was up there last year.
How many acres are exposed?
And it's pretty, you got enough thorns up there, I know that much.
I'm not sure, around, I'd say around four. That's the, the basic area right there.
Now, you spoken with the, the outfits like RMI and Cosella?
My brother did.
This is the huh?
Yeah.
But we're trying to stay.
Stop, hold on just a second.
Trying to just kinda avoid that, if possible.
Why? I mean, I'm just asking.
My feeling, my personal feeling is, okay, we bring in that paper sludge or whatever ash or whatever it can be. In twenty years down the road, the specs change and someone finds something that could go wrong with it. Now it's considered contaminated, so we just assume we have it dirt.
You got the dirt.
For a sellable product.
Oh, you have the dirt.
Sellable lead.
Oh, do you have the top soil?
We have the dirt there, it's there.
Oh, all right.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't know that.
We, we prefer that too, I think.
Yeah?
I'm saying, there's no trucking in, in or out, there's gonna be a bulldozer.
It's all self-contained.
A loader maybe, a couple pieces of equipment, that's all that's going in.
And it's four or five acres?
Yeah.
It sounds manageable.
It says all the material is around the floor. Cause what happens, we push all the overburden from the top soil off and then we excavate in the middle, now we're just gonna push the sides off back in.
Oh, gee, that's wonderful.
I didn't know, I don't think your brother knew that.
Well, he knew that, but.
He didn't tell.
He didn't explain it.
No, I, cause that's not what he's, that's not what we, the conversations we had. Oh, all right, well, that makes it. That's a whole different ballgame, yeah.
So I'm saying, so if, like I say, if I had a permit, this, say this week, say if you said, okay, go do it. If I had got a dozer in there for a, a week, the place would look totally different.
You know how to operate him? I mean, are you? You're the guy?
Yeah.
Okay.
Look at his hands, come on. So we really, so what we need from you is to bring those original drawings in?
Yeah, we got them.
And then bring the quotes in.
I think they're in California right now.
But they could be.
I can, I can get them back.
Yeah, and then get, get some pricing?
Yeah, I can get a couple of the estimates.
Couple of estimates and maybe a written explanation of exactly what you're gonna do.
Okay.
Based on.
I can get a better pic.
You could, you could even take the original drawings, go down to Staples, make a copy. Preserve your original. Take the copy and, uh, red pencil them in as to, you know, slopes here or dirt pile moved and the grade, the final grade. Now it's a pile, but the final grade will be flat or something, I don't, I'm making this up, but. I, I would, I would mark and annotate, you know, explain what you're gonna do. And, and like I say, we really wanna judge it by the results.
Right.
You know, so we, we'd have a final, I, we'd may require that we go out and look at it and, and have our engineer look at it and say, yeah, you, you did what you said you were gonna do. you did what you said you were gonna do.
Yeah.
If you, if you, if you get that information, you give me a call, I'll go down and whip over it with you outside the board meeting, so we can kinda get things...
Escalate it?
Roll a little bit quicker.
Well, let's wait, let's back up here, let's, let's get a little bit, uh, more of a plan. What I'd like to do is, Scott, excuse me, what I'd like to do is, uh, have a motion for the board to request Bill to take a site visit, where we're obviously welcome to go there with him, to determine if in fact that site could be considered stabilized. And, uh, at that point, that makes all the difference in the world, because we can't do anything without that, that clause being satisfied.
Yeah.
Okay, and as I said, the board of selectmen issued that permit, we had nothing to do with it. But, the term stabilized would have to come from us to the, as Tom said, to the select board for the authorization of that return of funds. Okay? That, that's what I would like to see. And, so I'll take a motion on that.
I'd like to make a motion to that effect, I'm not gonna repeat it.
No, fine. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Bill, you don't mind doing that?
I'll just, I'll, I'll do whatever the board wants, but, uh, do you need the engineer's endorsement? Or do you think members of the planning board can make that independent judgment?
Well, we may, but we would appreciate your, you know, accompaniment and professional advice on that as well.
Okay, just...
Okay?
We'll have to look up the word stabilized very carefully.
I mean, it's, 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 you can define it any way you want, I mean...
No, professional engineers can't.
I know, I know, exactly. If you ask for an engineer's decision whether it's stabilized...
No, I asked for Bill.
Well, I'm just saying.
My company. I know, you keep saying Bill, but you really should be saying places.
Right. I, I...
Then phase two of this, I think.
All right, wait, we have a motion on the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.
All, so vote, very well. Okay, so that's, that's phase one, we'll, we'll...
What, the motion?
Make that determination.
The motion is to have places engineers look at the site.
No, accompany the planning board to the site. Is that right?
Yes.
That's right.
It's a hand-holding operation.
Yes.
Make a determination of the condition of the pit.
Friday? Can't do it Friday, it's not posted.
Today is Wednesday, yeah, we can't do it Friday.
We can do it Saturday.
But we're meeting Monday anyways, maybe first thing.
Yep, maybe, we'll talk about that in a minute, we can do that, okay?
It stays lightly, uh, you can do it almost anytime, day or night.
Dry weather.
Yeah. You knocked them, what, two days ago?
Yeah, I still got one more week.
Waiters.
All right, so, all right, so we, we've got a plan here right now, we can determine when we can get up there, that'll be fine, we'll let you know. We have contact information for you?
Yes.
Contact, Janice.
Janice.
Okay.
You guys around during the day?
Give us your contact, you have it, Janet?
I have their phone number here.
Yeah, that's my home office, so we call that anytime.
I don't wanna go any further than this now, we have a plan, we'll take what we need to do, if you guys get your paperwork together, we can schedule you for next month. And, uh, maybe try to do it a little earlier next month, maybe we'll start the meeting at six, or five thirty.
Four thirty.
So we can go to bed.
Well, so they don't have to wait, they can meet first next time.
That's right. Because right now, it's pretty near drinking time.
Should, should we get into the boy what?
But when we meet next...
Is there any way of having a planning board meeting other than the first one's the other month?
There is, but we won't need an, we don't need one.
Okay.
Yep, right.
That's all I'm asking.
What is the board's, if I just throw it on the table, what's the board's expectation for the next time they come? I, I'll express some things I would expect, if they can get the Federal Express guy to give you the drawings back, and some, and you, you said you have people...
They might be...
Estimating the job.
Right.
They must have some concept of what they were going to do.
Right.
And they will have a description of it, and so we'd like to see those descriptions, we don't have to see your prices or anything, but we want some assurance that you can do it for ten thousand dollars.
Right.
If, if it comes in a hundred thousand dollars, we've got a whole nother situation here. And so they'll have some description of what they do, and you mark the drawings, or whatever you, you know, here's the topsoil, here's the hole, the topsoil goes in the hole, you know? And then what it would look like when you're done is the most important thing, if we're going to proceed on the basis of evaluating what's accomplished.
Do you think we should run this by the select board just informally, just to see what their feelings are about it?
I don't think we should do that, because it's, it's clearly a decision that they have to make, and they're gonna have to make it formally. I mean, it's a, it's, the question is, if we can satisfy our criterion, then they've satisfied their criterion. And your fight is to get the money back from the select board with our standard.
Yeah, but I'm trying to avoid a, not the word fight, but I, if we could just kind of, this is what our plan is...
I think it all depends on how we get our act together. And I think it's wrong to go with kind of a half act.
Right.
Uh, let's, let's get our act together and approach them formally, we've got a plan, we'd like to exercise the plan.
Right, exactly.
Mm-hmm.
Because I would, I, like I said earlier, what I'm feeling, my gut feeling, is that if we don't go to the select board with a plan, they're gonna put it right back on us, which is what would be normal process anyway.
Well, if they say that, you know, as of two thousand and ten, the planning board has all jurisdiction over it, and they give up the jurisdiction, then it becomes our decision.
It is our decision.
Yeah, it's our decision that way.
This is the last report from Ty and Vaughn.
Okay, however, it, it is our decision under the gravel bylaw to determine status and permitting.
Yes.
It is, however, is their decision, however, to allocate the funds. That's basically what we're, what we're doing is...
Could I get a copy of the permit?
Yeah, sorry it took so long.
No. My point is, if, if the word stabilization is supposed to be synonymous with reclamation, I don't know if it is.
Stabilization and reclamation.
Don't, don't confuse it.
All right, I'm confusing it, confusing myself before long.
We talked reclamation, the permit that they submitted to us said stabilization, so that's what we wanted to, we wanna satisfy that.
If it's stabilized, then you can reclaim.
Yeah.
Can I have a copy of this?
That's actually not what it says.
Well, I've never read it before, so I'm really talking through my head, I'll stop.
That's actually not what it says, but, it doesn't, I, we, and I think Bill's even alluded to the fact that we can, we can, we can basically do what we want, I think is what we're saying, under that gravel bylaw permit, we can waive a lot of these things to accommodate that. And to get it planned.
Exactly, oh, sure.
Yeah, so we can basically say, do whatever you want, but we could, we can waive a lot of things in the permit, or in the, in the process to get this thing to move along, and time is, I agree, and I, I've been to the site with your brother, I think Tom and I went up there. Time is of the essence, because really need this thing under contract...
In a short window.
But, like July, the first week of July, so you can have a chance to get it done.
Right.
By, in the dry weather, if we ever get any...
And, one more thing in your plan, we're all talking about moving dirt around, but there is a, if I recall correctly, at this site, there's a silt prevention little system, what do you call it?
Retention pond.
Yeah, retention pond, and a dam, and some other stuff, and so address the water as well as the dirt, that's all I'm saying.
That wouldn't, that would stay just the way it is.
Well, I don't know, I'm just saying, address it in your plan.
That's, that's still a question.
That's fine.
Retention pond?
Yeah.
Yes? Question from Bill?
Okay, hold on, folks, we have a question back there.
I just wanna caution the board that you can't treat one applicant different than another applicant without due cause, because then you set precedent. So a hundred acre earth removal guy comes in and says, you let them do it without an engineer, et cetera, et cetera, you can do that by your regulations, but you potentially establish a precedent, and there is a way around it. So you have to have very specific findings that are unique to this site, this condition, that makes this so unique when you issue your permit, those findings have to be extremely specific to them, their situation, so that you do not create a precedent elsewhere in town.
That's good advice, thank you. And, and what we need to do is satisfy the first condition first, because without the first condition, second one isn't gonna take place, if I'm understanding it right, and we want both conditions to take place. So when you come back in July, as Tom has suggested, and as Bill has pointed out, somebody has to have some type of dialogue or narrative that you can give to us for what's gonna happen, how it's gonna happen, when it's gonna happen, subject to the, maybe the previous plans that you can reference, and if those are engineered plans, all the better, and if they're pertinent and relative, then, you know, you might wanna, you might wanna read the bylaw and request any type of waivers that would apply, that you feel that you can ask us for waiving. We're more than happy to help you with that, I mean, in the, in the sense that, you know, you, if you call me up and say, what the heck does section B, number one, say, I'll, I'll try to help you with it, you know, and if I don't know it, Bill will, or Tom will, we all, so we get it done, is what I'm saying. Does that make sense? I mean, with, Bill's point is well-taken, we don't want set precedents of everything to go one way or another, but I wasn't suggesting that either. What I was suggesting is that, you know, the biggest hurdle is, is making sure we get the money, you can get the money back. We can't help you unless you get your money back.
And you might, you might ask somebody how much it costs to take your old drawings, red line them up, and squeeze them with this, the engineer's name.
Yeah, with an updated version on it, that's all.
Right.
You don't have to start from scratch.
And as patient as...
Hmm?
Said you could probably get it done for eggs.
Eggs?
Eggs.
Eggs and cheese?
Flowers and mulch.
Yeah, it can smell like mulch.
You had said that you've already got material there.
It's all in.
So all you gotta do is put a bulldozer, and then throw some grass seed down.
Change some slopes.
That's the basics.
Yeah, get it, get it for the grades and the slopes and the water paths and the...
Right, I understand that.
They, they got the, they had to get the, the dirt.
The good soil out.
Work off the clay, out of the way, to get the half the clay.
We had fifteen feet of overburdened, upon the good material.
All that's dirt.
We had to move the fifteen feet off the top.
That was...
All that's dirt.
That's actually what the permit said it was supposed to do. So you actually did what you said, the permit said that you had to leave the topsoil on site for reclamation.
Right.
And they, they actually did that.
Tom, you've been to the site?
It's, uh...
Fifteen or twenty feet?
Fifteen or twenty feet.
Yeah, parts of it are reclaimed.
Well, I think we're gonna have to...
This slope has already been...
I don't, I don't think either of those agencies would be an issue, but if we're in jurisdiction of item, the permit has to be...
Maybe I'm wrong, maybe it's this...
So you might want to see the conservation commission, ask them for a determination whether or not they have any issues with it.
That's been reclaimed. This is reclaimed.
We're gonna need those drawers.
This is a raspberry, man, you get died...
Well, they would help if they had a site visit too, right? They, they go up and look, make a determination, don't they?
What it's supposed to be.
If I can take a site walk, then I can render a letter and say, dear planning board members, we believe the site this condition, and we did not observe jurisdictional wetlands within a hundred feet, we could potentially add that. I mean, the first thing I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna go to GIS and see if there are map wetlands on the GIS maps, and I'm gonna look at the DCR maps and see whether this pits in their jurisdiction, because I'm a little concerned.
It is. It is within the four hundred feet, and it is on the primary, but...
But it was a, it was an A and R in existence prior to the wetland protecting it.
But the other thing is, what they're doing is what the DCR would require that they...
Well, I don't have any, yeah, I'm saying, I don't think conservation or the DCR is going to give you a hard time, but you don't just go up, start bulldozing within a hundred feet of a wetland without checking the zone, or you shouldn't.
A wetland today?
They don't have a wetland there, the river's right there.
Are they that close to the river?
If, if there's a stream or swamp within a hundred feet...
We got a map, we'll check, we can check the map.
The only thing that's close to still is the retention pond, I was saying, that ain't getting touched at all.
Well, I'll, I'll take a look at the stuff online, just to make sure.
It's, you, you're within the, I'm pretty sure you're within the four hundred feet of that river.
Yeah.
I thought it was because it goes downhill, doesn't it?
Even if you aren't, you wanna send to DCR anyway, and have Jeff Lacy come out and just babysit it.
I think Caroline Razor could probably do it too.
Okay.
Just to be sure, you know, help them solid boundaries kind of thing.
The river, the river's just over here, yeah.
DCR says, yeah, you're good.
I have to look.
Good luck, I mean, I, I did look at it.
All right, well, I'm sorry, we don't wanna keep you any longer unless you have any other questions.
Just try to get it resolved.
We did get the resolve, we did interest, though, we got that all the time.
Oh, yeah, that's all set, yeah.
Oh, they, they turned your interest.
Cool. That's a long story.
And so, Mr. V...
Very well.
Are there any other agenda items?
Yes, sir.
Move to adjourn.
Well, it is, as I said, it's pretty near drinking time, so it's that magic moment we've all waited for, Tom?
I, I have a couple things.
Oh, oh.
Not to do with them.
Oh, go ahead, dear.
Well, I, I got mixed up between the executive session, I, everybody saw the reminder about that at one o'clock on Monday, but it's two o'clock, but I think I posted it for one o'clock, the site walk with the conservation for Parago. So I just read the email, it was supposed to be for two.
Okay, that's not a problem, it, it...
A Monday posting is far enough out to change.
No, this is a Friday post, Monday is correct.
All right.
Monday is correct.
Any sooner than one o'clock.
Yeah, but it could be after one o'clock.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, so you covered.
So just so that you guys know, just...
Two o'clock Friday.
Tom, would you go down there and stand and be eaten by mosquitoes from one to two until we arrive?
And then curse me.
Well, um, that, that's not a problem, okay? So two o'clock Friday, one forty-seven Williamsville Road, site visit. You're there also, huh?
Yeah, Tony reached out to me and asked me to kinda give him a little hand on the land.
Okay, and one o'clock Monday, in the slate, not the slate building.
Library.
The library, for the executive session.
Oh, that's what I was gonna say, so the offices don't open till two o'clock?
Correct.
Did you see my note?
I did, but you're gonna meet us at one.
I can be there at one.
One o'clock Monday? Correct. The twelfth?
Oh, that's that one little...
You guys are in executive session?
This one here?
Yes.
Executive session.
For another day. Well, I have only one thing left to say.
Nope.
Go ahead.
Not the adjourn thing.
No?
I know, he's gonna say...
You have another item?
Just about Miss Janet here, saying thank you for all of her hard work.
Oh, I'm, I, I'd certainly appreciate that comment, if you'd like to say it, go ahead.
I just think you did a great job, Janet.
Thank you.
I hate to see you leave.
I wasn't gonna say anything, because I didn't have a chance to talk with you, but is it official?
It is official.
Okay, then, what we're, we're referring to is, we are unfortunately going to be losing Janet to the town of Westminster. And, uh, June twenty-first will be her last day, so we wanna officially thank you, I, as I said, I wasn't sure it was a public announcement, but as long as it is, we certainly, we certainly...
Just did.
Well, no, Janet's sensitive, I mean, it's hard to say.
Just gotta get behind time, you, don't be so sensitive.
I know.
But, uh, we certainly have appreciated everything you've done for us, and we're gonna miss you, and it's, uh, it's been a, a very nice pleasure having you as our clerk. But, uh, we certainly have appreciated everything you've done for us, and we're gonna miss you, and it's, uh, it's been a, a very nice pleasure having you as our clerk.
Thank you, and I appreciate all of you. It's been a very interesting ride.
Very good job, Janet.
Thank you very much.
You've always been very professional and.
I, I didn't know how you were gonna react, so.
Oh, we're all very upset.
Sad, but, uh, we're all so happy for you. It sounds like a very good opportunity. Westminster is a great community, and I'm sure you will serve them well.
No, it's not.
Not as good as Hobbison, come on.
I think it's pretty nice.
Well, in that case, uh.
We will miss you, Janet.
We will definitely miss you so much.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
I'll make the transition as seamless as we can.
Do you have, they have someone, they couldn't just tell me?
No, I don't know, it's not posted yet, but.
What is the position? Is it, is it strictly a building inspector's support?
Land use clerk is the name of it.
Co-broke between building and planning.
Land board and building department.
Oh, it is. It's a combo? Oh.
It's a twofer.
No, you mean over there or here?
Over there.
Over there is just building department.
So it's just the permitting processes and all of that?
Right. And some interaction with the planning board, but the planning board minutes taking is separate.